Everyone, we have a pre-Gavel item, so Carla, I'm not asking for the role yet. This is a pre-Gavel proclamation in honor of one of our most esteemed local artists, and that's Mr. Isaka Sham-Sudin, who, sir, could you just sort of wave in the back so people can see you? Thank you for being here. And this is a proclamation that was brought to me by Commissioner U. Daly, and a proclamation, sir, is something that we read on behalf of the entire city council. And if you wouldn't mind just coming up here, sir, and sitting here at the rostrum, I'd like to have the honor of reading this proclamation on behalf of the Portland City Council. And before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that the office of the mayor has long had one of your works prominently displayed in the office, and it's one that has provoked a lot of thought, it's brought a lot of joy and a lot of color to our office, and we're appreciative for that. And we also have one of your works hanging in the Rose Room, which is our primary ceremonial space in City Hall. And we're so grateful to you and for your artistic talent and everything you do for the city of Portland. So on behalf of the Portland City Council, whereas Isaka Sham-Sudin, the sixth of fourteen, whose parents worked as tenant farmers, moved to Vamport near Portland, Oregon in 1947 after a racist lynch mob attempted to kill his father in Texas. He was declared a child prodigy at an early age and won a scholarship to the Portland Art Museum. This was the beginning of decades of amazing educational experiencing using art to build a global consciousness towards social change. And whereas, black families that located in Vamport and became displaced by the flood continued to experience racism in Portland and have historically experienced intergenerational discrimination and displacement. Art has always been a bridge towards influencing systematic racism for policy change. Civic engagement during the Civil Rights Era attracted the younger artist Isaka Sham-Sudin as he left Portland for the South to become a member of the SNCC Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, organizing in Arkansas for years before heading west to San Francisco, where he later supported movements using his artistic platforms with the Black Artist Repertory Theater and as a Black Panther. But even before the floods and the '60s civil rights work, black arts in Portland was a thriving force for civil rights and social change. And whereas, the stories told by Isaka using art, theater, and music enhanced and created a signature value representing the life, families, work, and culture shared by original descendants of black Portland. And this is an important element that is not always acknowledged when telling the stories of Portland's black history, except for the medium of art. And whereas, today on this and every thereafter, June 19th, known as Juneteenth, is promoted in black communities across this country as acknowledgement and to celebrate the emancipation of all black Americans. It is emancipation and freedom of expression that we receive these gifts in the artistic genius of Isaka Sham-Sudin, accompanied by his notes and liberated archives. His perspectives on the courage of Juneteenth is cemented in Oregon, on walls throughout the city, on our streets, and even in our parks and transit ways. It is because of the contributions of Isaka Sham-Sudin that we have the intentional access of his experiences and direct education. Isaka has now shared his gift with us, a collection of his work, including a piece made at the former Albina Arts Center, which has inspired the limited edition Juneteenth Calendar, a legacy project presented and supported by the Arlene Schnitzer Foundation and many friends. And whereas, today, all Portlanders are encouraged to tell stories of social change using literature, photos, and art. You are encouraged to reflect on the spirit and motivation of all black people in the fight for human rights and dignity. Now, therefore, I Ted Wheeler, the mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2019 to be Isaka Sham-Sudin Day in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this day. Thank you, sir. Commissioner U. Daly?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that this acknowledgement is a long time coming and very well deserved. Your work is part of Portland and part of all of our lives, as the mayor mentioned. It not only documents the lives of the region's black families, it's also grounded in the history of our region, which is both inspiring and abhorrent. Thank you for all that you do, Isaka. We're honored to proclaim June 19th, or Juneteenth, as Isaka Sham-Sudin Day. And I want to give special thanks to Teresa Raeford, Tia Carpenter, and Tiffany Burnett from Artists for Black Lives for partnering with my office on this special celebration. I also wanted to mention Isaka's new Juneteenth Gallanders, which features some of his most famous pieces coupled with regional black history. They're for sale online. I regrettably don't know the website, but they're also available at this evening's event. So everyone, please join us in the atrium at 5:30 for our evening celebration and exhibit. And congratulations.
Very good. Commissioner U. Daly?
Yeah.
And if we could take a photo real quick?
Great. Maybe just come up here.
May I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Would you like to say something, sir?
I'd like to share.
Oh, the photos can go to Carla.
Very good.
Something with you. And thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and Amanda, Fritz, Chloe, especially your office that reached out to me, and Nick Fish, who was representing my sister at one time. You probably don't know that was my sister, but Mariah Taylor. And this is an opportunity that, I'll tell you, I've almost prided myself, I say "almost" because I have the humility to know that you can get sucker punched sometimes on my self-defense, but this time, I didn't have anything to defend because they hit me with the, what do you call it, a cold cock. And it was sweet. It was in the form of Bird, and some of you know her, and Teresa Raeford, and the wonderful people who worked with her, Fendi Germany, and many others that have coalesced within the community, that see the values, that see the young talent and work with the young talent that we have here, to send them on a trajectory that will allow them to explore art, to explore art. I'd like to make just one little, I tend to be lengthy, so I'll keep that in mind and keep it short. But some of you may have known that Hitler was an artist, a frustrated artist. How many of you knew that George Washington Carver was also an artist? An artist who had to change directions because the art school that he had, he had, was enlisted in, that he got a scholarship to, didn't realize he was black. Maybe it was the University of Iowa, and then he matriculated to Skigee after that. But what I brought that up to say that, many times in the challenges that art presents, I didn't know what an artist was, even when I was eight years old and people started making a fuss about my drawings and so forth. But there's so many challenges that an artist, once you get into it, I didn't know how to draw good, so I attempted new ways. I attempted to draw horses because I was scared I couldn't draw horses. I put off drawing people because I was scared, and then you challenge, and then you challenge, and you challenge, and you find these small accomplishments, large at that time, add up. They add confidence, they add a form of independence, they develop a self-critique and a critique of the surroundings, our environment, not only representational art, but also art that explores any medium, any idea. And these are therapeutic and very functional ways of getting a child into a track where other things don't really, I mean, things like hanging out, doing nothing, they don't appeal to them anymore, look forward to each day. I'm alive today, probably. All my brothers are gone, I have 14 children, all my sisters except two, and many others that I know and have known that have quit in the quest of becoming an artist because they didn't have a route, they didn't have patronage, they didn't have mentorship. We need an art center here. We need, if you could take a peep at this, this is a scholarship program that I started when I was teaching at Portland State. We need opportunities for our youth. Many of them may have and do have the kinds of the material within them to do amazing things. You can't predict that they won't, but we can predict that they will grow out of feelings of not knowing what to do with themselves, feelings of displacement, feelings of not belonging. And that's, those are the things that have propelled my concentration on African-American history. I knew only about white people all the way through school. I had one black instructor all the way through to the 12th grade, and I only learned about European peoples. That's all I learned about, just a little hit on slavery. So, and I think all of you have been here long enough to know that we had a real fight just to have two streets named after black folks. Harriet Tubman, on the $20 bill now, we have that situation in front of us. We need reparations. And if I present a challenge to you all, with all respect, and also an appeal, to help us establish an art center here that will be ongoing, not one of these things where we have to fight every year so hard. What I propose is a, we need a task force to resurrect the Albina Arts Center and make it better than it ever was. But if we had something like a WPA project where we can, where artists can build on the research, working with chroniclers, working with writers, working with photographers, to start a whole series, at least five years in the initial stage, of making art in all forms that have to do with historical research, our own. There's a project that I did at Dawson Park right now, and it has about 80 portraits of African-Americans, local, that have lived in this area, that have done things that really have made our lives, all of our lives, so much better. But that's just the tip of the iceberg. How can we enrich this city? We can enrich this city by investing in those people. Did you know Jacob Lawrence was artist in residence at the Art Museum here in 1966? If we had the Art Museum, if the Art Museum was really hooked up, and that was one of the problems, I was an instructor at that Art Museum, a volunteer instructor, was that the funding was so, it was so much of a problem. Finally, it caved in, I think it was 1977, and nothing since. And so I just appeal to you for that, and I hope I haven't spoken too long. Did you know Diego Rivera's daughter was here also? And then she came here in support of the African-American Visual Arts Scholarship. We did benefits at Kennedy School, at the old church, and so forth. Anyway, I hope we'll be able to meet later and really get into this because the Albina Mural Project of, and I'll shut up after this, but the Albina Mural Project in '77, '78 attracted people from as far away as Germany, and it's in a book called Community Murals now, and Walls of Heritage, Walls of Pride. But that wasn't in my head. I had no idea that that would happen. I guarantee you that you will be paid manyfold. You will, please, throw in all the weight. Thank you, Chloe. Thank you, Pollyann Verge. Thank you, Teresa Raeford, and all the other wonderful people who have made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Should we get this way? Okay.
We want the kiddos to be here. Yeah, so y'all go follow Isaka.
Teresa. All right, everyone, look here.
Halloween, and I'll smile.
Thank you.
Hey, who stole my gavel? Okay. I see what's going on here.
I did not touch the gavel. I don't know how it got there.
All right, good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, June 19th, 2019, Juneteenth morning session of the Portland City Council. Carla, could you please call the role?
Yes. Fish?
Here.
Hardesty? U. Daly?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel. Good morning.
Good morning, and welcome to the Portland City Council. The city council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping keep your fellow Portlanders welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you very much. Carla, first communications.
Item 578, request of Roberta Palmer to address council regarding a new revenue source to help fund affordable housing, education, and other pressing needs.
Good morning. Name for the record, three minutes, please.
Good morning. A few years ago, Portland declared that our homelessness constituted an emergency. Since then, Portland has acted...
I'm sorry, you have to state your name for the record. It's a legal thing.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Roberta Palmer, I'm a concerned citizen of Portland.
Awesome, thank you.
And anyway, Portland declared it a homelessness emergency in 2015. Since then, Portland has acted, Metro has acted, so has the state, but 100,000 Portlanders pay more than 50% of their income for housing and may find themselves on the street during the next economic downturn. Therefore, it seems likely that despite these efforts, the affordable housing problem will only grow. As long as revenue is left on the table, we are not doing all we can. To me, the obvious one is a tax on prepared food and drink. As a food destination that attracts many visitors and tourists, Portland is uniquely situated to benefit from such a tax. It is a fair tax in that those who spend more for food and drink will pay more tax. Unlike the regressive property tax, it does not raise the cost of housing. Some restaurant costs have risen 18% recently, while a 15% tip is commonplace plus. Therefore, a 1% to 3% tax on prepared food and drink is minuscule in comparison, yet the revenue stream is huge. If, quote, "regressive" taxes, such as those on sales, hurt the poor, why is it that Portland is one of the poorest states in the Union? Why do the other advanced economies, which employ a huge sales tax in the form of the value-added tax, have far lower poverty rates than the United States and public services that we can only dream of? Ashland and Yawats employ a 5% tax on prepared food and drink, yet their restaurant industries have not folded and tourists continue to visit. I hear that a 1% tax has been advocated, but it will be difficult enough to pass that. Why not go for 2% to 3% and get more revenue? Also, if a public referral can be avoided, please do. Think of Brexit and the Oregon Constitution. What a mess. We can barely elect our representatives. Policy decisions should be left to our representatives. So let me close with the words of Jesus. "The foxes have their holes, the birds have their nests, but man has nowhere to lay his head." In the best city in the richest nation on earth, how can this be?
Thank you. Appreciate your being here. Next individual, 579. And I don't, do 579, Chris Wallace and Crystal Lee Crane, do they want to come up together?
Is she here now? Okay, okay. 580 isn't here, but 579 is ready.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. 579, request of Chris Wallace Caldwell to address council regarding Human Rights Commission update and review of human rights concerns.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Chris Wallace Caldwell, I'm a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission. I was to be joined today by Dr. Crystal Lee Crane, who just sent me a note. She unfortunately can't join, but she and I prepared a statement on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. Basically, we are honored to both represent the Portland Human Rights Commission and all those in our city, as we've heard today, this morning already, who care about human dignity. And what we would like to do is come on a more regular basis and have a dialogue with the city council. So this is really the start of that relationship, and I am going to read a few words that Dr. Crane put together and also just kind of give you a sense of what we see this time for. Over the past year, we have strategically designed a process where the Human Rights Commission can fully actualize the city charter for its purpose and the commitment of each commissioner to be responsive and accountable to the public. That being said, we intend for this time to be heard monthly, represented by different commissioners each time. We hope in that process to share with you our individual and collective experiences for our service to the city of Portland, but also how our individual positionality serves us in our sight and ability to take the things we witness, to also take the things that are presented to us by members of the public who come and give testimony during our monthly meetings, and turn those into action for those who can't be present on a day like today. The Human Rights Commission recognizes that we have the responsibility to do more than just symbolic gesture of words to sit in an archive, but we are here to serve and to push or bend the line of justice in the city to its right place. That place is people-centered. We believe in partnership and collaborative action, and we know this doesn't come only in meetings and public testimonies, but also in structurally placed processes to enable the most just results. So the last time that I was here before you was in reading the Declaration of Human Rights, where we were highlighting the 70th anniversary of the UN Declaration of Human Rights, and that was in December. And my colleague, Dr. Crane, she made a point in contributing to that statement to name white supremacy as a larger social context that we need to consider. And what I wanted to represent for you is that even since that time in December, in that intervening time, we could identify incidences where someone has been the victim of hate speech, hate violence, hate rhetoric, and in fact, Dr. Crane was going to present her personal experience in that regard today and unfortunately could not be here. Researchers from the University of Maryland and national security officials identify far-right violence as one of the deadliest and most violent threats in our country. And so what we want to do is find a means to name that and to recognize that our role is to help us understand that our processes, our policies, and our practices, how we name those, how we identify those are absolutely critical. So we have been working with you, we'll continue to do so on naming those items, and we did most recently in presenting non-belief, working with you to present non-belief as not a basis for discrimination. And so those are the kinds of things we will look at continuing to do with you, and we just put that charge to you, to continue to look at where policies and practices may unknowingly put the most vulnerable at risk, or where we might not be highlighting something that's happening on a daily basis in Portland that we need to call out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll let you go over a little bit because, number one, your testimony is very provocative, and it suggests a partnership, and I want you to know, I'm very eager to have that partnership. And number two, because I want to acknowledge, you're not getting paid for your hard work on the commission, and the commission does tremendous work, you have lots of meetings, you have lots of discussions, you pull in different perspectives across the city, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate that. So we look forward to the continued conversations.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
You bet. Carla, next individual, please.
Let's see, 580 is not here, so 581 and 582, I think, want to come up together?
Very good.
581, request of Cole Haver to address council regarding council support of the arts and the creative community. And 582, request of Jen Forty to address council regarding council support of the arts and the creative community.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
most recently in presenting non-belief, working with you to present non-belief as not a basis for discrimination. And so those are the kinds of things we will look at continuing to do with you, and we just put that charge to you, to continue to look at where policies and practices may unknowingly put the most vulnerable at risk, or where we might not be highlighting something that's happening on a daily basis in Portland that we need to call out.
Thank you. And I'll let you go over a little bit because, number one, your testimony is very provocative, and it suggests a partnership, and I want you to know, I'm very eager to have that partnership. And number two, because I want to acknowledge, you're not getting paid for your hard work on the commission, and the commission does tremendous work. You have lots of meetings, you have lots of discussions, you pull in different perspectives across the city, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate that. So we look forward to the continued conversations.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
You bet. Carla, next individual, please.
Let's see, 580 is not here, so 581 and 582, I think, want to come up together?
Very good.
581, request of Cole Haver to address council regarding council support of the arts and the creative community. And 582, request of Jen Forti to address council regarding council support of the arts and the creative community.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Cole Haver. I'm a lawyer, and I work with a lot of creative people in their businesses, and I've invited...
Cole, would you mind pulling the mic just a little bit closer?
I will.
Should I start over? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Hi, I'm Cole Haver. I'm a lawyer, and I have the privilege of working with a lot of creative people in their businesses. I invited two of them to join me here today. The first is the Portland Winter Light Festival, and they'll introduce themselves. And after the following us will be Belligram, Jen Forti.
I'm Jeff Schnabel, I'm the new director for the Portland State University School of Architecture and one of the co-founders for the Portland Winter Light Festival.
Thank you.
I'm Alicia Sullivan. I'm the executive director of the Willamette Light Brigade, which is the organization that presents the Portland Winter Light Festival annually.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Herring, the other co-founder for the light festival and artistic director.
Thank you.
So I want to tell you guys a little bit about the Portland Winter Light Festival. If you have yet to experience it, we hope you'll come out February 6 through 8, 2020. Seems like a long way off, but really, it's just around the corner for us. The festival takes place along the banks of Willamette, on both east and west side of the river, and at affiliate locations throughout Portland. Light festivals have a proven track record of creating significant economic opportunity for cities and invigorating Portland in the wintertime as part of our festival's mission. This year, our festival facilitated an estimated $2.1 million in economic impact during the slow season of February, with a winter storm watch to contend with and snow warnings. So that's pretty good. We saw attendance of 154,000 people over the three-day event, a five-fold increase since the inaugural year in 2016. So there's incredible potential for growth here. By comparison, Baltimore's Light City generated $33.5 million in 2018, with $470,000 over a week. So there's a huge amount of potential. Economic impact is not the only thing that this festival provides, and we provided you with a packet with some more detailed information, but the second part of our mission is to build community by bringing art and technology to inclusive audiences. And we present this event for free, completely free, to the public, and we're really committed to removing the economic barriers to art and design that are within traditional cultural institutions. So now, heading into our fifth year, we really know the impact that this event has and the potential it has for Portland. For 2020, we're planning on upwards of 200,000 people over the three-day event. People will come out, rain or snow, to interact with the art and be together. We'd love for this festival to grow into something that Portland is on the map for, for art and technology, and someday host a million people in February on our own. We'd like to become a sustainable anchor in Portland's winter landscape and keep providing this festival for free to Portland residents, kind of as an amenity. So we're hoping you all will consider truly getting involved and starting a dialogue with us to expand and grow this festival. The event is not a done deal. It takes expertise and resources to put together, so we'd like to follow up with you. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have one more testimony coming.
Which one?
One more testimony.
This one?
Hey, I have a minute of your time. I'm a Belligram telegram, the new old paradigm. I've been sent by someone who thinks you're the bomb with a message in the form of a You've got voicemail. On behalf of me and the rest of the working artists and musicians in Portland and those representing us, we want to literally sing you praises. And thank you for being our friends, supporting artists and funding them for what we do for the arts again and again. I'm singing here to say, I hope it always will stay this way. My hat is off, won't you stand up and take a bow? Portland is a city that supports the arts and culture too. Yeah, this is true, and it's good business too, and it all comes back to you. Thank you for being our friend. Film festivals and rack. Here we go. Do it again. Film festivals and rack. Winter lights festivals, Thursday art, musician loading zones for our gear to get in and get out. Let me do that one more time. Film festivals and rack. Winter lights, Thursday art, first and last. There we go. Musician loading zones for our gear to get in and get out. Celebrations parades, bring tons of thousands to Portland each day. We all need good art, it's big fun and a smart way to play. Artists are working musicians that pay their bills just like... Oh, my gosh, here we go again. Artists are working people who gotta pay their bills just like you. But we've got our back, you keep us in the back, and that's why we're here to say, thank you for being our friend.
I wanna thank you.
Thank you for being our friend.
I wanna thank you.
Thank you for being our friend.
I wanna thank you.
Thank you for being our friend.
I wanna thank you.
Everybody, if you want to, thank you for being our...
We wanna thank you.
Thank you for being our friend.
We wanna thank you.
Thanks for being a friend.
We wanna thank you.
Thanks for supporting the arts. Perfect timing. There we go. I hope I was liable for disruption to your day. And again, my name is Jen Forti, just to give you my name with Belligram Telegram. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to thank you for supporting the arts.
Thanks, Jen.
Cheerio.
Awesome. Thank you. Follow that. All right, so that completes communications. Carla, have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, we have 587 and 595.
587, 87 and 95?
Correct.
Very good. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Fish?
Yes, aye.
Har... Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. Colleagues, just a quick point. Item 588, which we just passed, this is a grant for $40,000 intended for land use planning and pre-development materials in support of what's called Findlay Commons. That's a redevelopment of parking lot spaces at St. Mark's Lutheran Church on southeast Powell and southeast 54th Avenue. This is to create 38 units of supportive housing, and this is housing that will ultimately be focused on underserved veterans, including veterans of color women and extremely low-income veterans. And so I'm very pleased to see the city of Portland partnering with the folks at St. Mark's on Findlay Commons. We'll now go to the first-time certain issue, and colleagues, just a little bit of housekeeping, we're going to read 583 and 584 together, and since the budget staff is here, we'll also move 603 after those two items. So Carla, if you could read 583 and 584 together first, please.
583, adopt the supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2018-19 over expenditure process and make budget adjustments in various funds. And 584, authorize temporary operating loans between various funds to fund interim funding to cover lags in federal, state, and other grant reimbursements and other negative cash and fund balances.
Very good. Colleagues, before us, we have what's called the over expenditure ordinance, also known as the OEO. The OEO is very narrowly...
I thought you called the OEO.
The OEO. Anyway, that's as fun as we're going to have here. It's very narrowly... Yeah, I was like, who's going to follow that act? And of course, it's me. And of course, I'm talking about the budget. It's very narrowly focused on preventing over expenditure at the bureau fund or appropriation level. As usual, there is also companion resolution authorizing a temporary operating loan to prevent temporary negative cash balances at the end of the fiscal year. I don't even think I could improve this if I sing it. There are a few other adjustments that interim director Kennard will walk us through, as well as relating to truing up the general fund carryover costs between our fiscal years. The proposed over expenditure ordinance allocates funding in the general fund policy set aside for the city attorney's office to request next fiscal year for settling claims related to last March's water main break. This morning, interim budget director Kennard will walk us through the current ordinance and the resolution. We'll then hear and second any amendments to both of those items. After that, we'll provide opportunity for public testimony on the OEO before taking your votes. And I'll turn this over to interim director Kennard to review the over expenditure ordinance, the OEO.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, Mayor, members of council. You can turn the OEO into a bit of a song, but I won't do that in front of you today.
Oh, come on.
Maybe next time. My name is Jessica Kennard, interim city budget director. I'm here with Jane Marie Ford, our budget monitoring process coordinator. Today, as the mayor mentioned, there are two items that are part of the final budget monitoring process of the year, the over expenditure ordinance, which includes a number of primarily technical adjustments, and also a loan resolution that prevents us from ending with a negative ending balance in our grants funds. I'll briefly walk you through some of the highlights in the over expenditure ordinance, and I know you have a packed agenda, so I'll be brief, but please feel free to interrupt with any questions if you have them. So in total, the OEO reduces the city's current appropriation by 19.8 million. This is primarily based on technical adjustments related to debt service reserves for urban renewal areas, so they're moving debt service reserves into ending fund balance, which is a technical adjustment. The key general fund changes is, as the mayor mentioned, there's one request for new general fund resources from contingency. This request allocates $250,000 to a policy set aside account for the city's attorney's office to request resources for settling claims related to the March 2019 water main break. Approving this request would leave $750,000 in the current year unrestricted general fund contingency. There are also two program carryover requests and special appropriations for grant funding that have been awarded, but they will not be spent or encumbered before the end of the fiscal year. This includes $150,000 carryover for East Portland Action Plan grants and just under $240,000 in special appropriations competitive grant pools. So again, these are funds were awarded, they just won't be spent, and so we're carrying them over to the next fiscal year. There are two requests to reappropriate general fund resources back to this fiscal year that were initially carried over through the spring bump. The bureaus have now realized the resources are actually needed this fiscal year. We talked about these last week as part of some of the amendments to the adopted budget, and this includes $55,000 for the Office of Community Technology, based on updated projections from mid-year transfer and reorganizations, things related to sort of their organizational transfer. They've realized they need that money this year instead of next year. And then $50,000 in the Portland Housing Bureau for a rental services contract. Again, the contractors realize they will be able to spend that money this year, so we're just moving it back into this year. Finally, there are two requested transfers from the Portland Parks and Recreation General Fund budget to other parks' funds. This includes a transfer of $60,000 to the Parks Memorial Fund to set aside resources for the scholarship program, and a transfer of $258,000 to the Parks Capital Improvement Fund to set aside resources that were appropriated for the East Bank Esplanade Capital Project. There are a couple of non-general fund items that I want to highlight. So the Office of Management and Finance is appropriating $17.3 million in contingency in the Facility Services Operating Fund, based upon faster-than-anticipated capital expenditures in the Portland building, so that's because we're moving more quickly than anticipated with the Portland Building Reconstruction Project. And then Parks is making adjustments in its enterprise funds, which is to increase the revenue projections in the golf fund by $200,000, and also make some adjustments to reflect lower-than-anticipated revenues in the International Raceway Fund. Those are the highlights of the OEO. The second item in front of you is a loan resolution. Again, this is a technical resolution that we bring forward every year, just to make sure when we send our... In our grants fund, we actually expend before we receive the reimbursement from the federal or the state governments, so if we don't do this loan, we end the year with a negative balance. And so this is to sort of take care of that, and it's a one-day loan that we process every year. So I'm happy to take any questions, and we will now move... The mayor may move to amendments if there are any.
So I have a question either to you, Jessica, or to Commissioner Fritz. I fully support the use of funds to settle the water main break claims, but I guess my question is, why isn't the Water Bureau taking that out of its own resources? Why are we taking it out of the general fund contingency?
So, in my understanding, I spoke with CFO Cooperman yesterday about this, and I believe that the general fund was determined as the most appropriate source because we're not actually accepting liability for these claims. Otherwise, it could be conceived as a risk management type of expenditure, but it's an action that the council is taking as a choice to essentially alleviate some of the burden from these property owners, but we are not accepting any liability associated with the property damage. And so the general fund contingency is what has been perceived to be the appropriate source.
I guess I'm still confused. Why is... I mean, we make judgments about liability all the time and overrule risk management, so why does a definitive ruling on liability dictate whether it's general fund or Water Bureau funds?
So the question...
It wouldn't happen without there being a water main break.
Yeah.
It then resulted in flooding, so it's all within... It's all related to the Water Bureau. Why not just use Water Bureau funds rather than general funds?
So if I might...
Commissioner Fritz.
...on the advice of the city attorney in relation to a previous lawsuit on appropriate use of water funds, it was just felt that this would get the money to the people who need it as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm certainly open, Commissioner. We're going to have that discussion later today. The ordinance is on the council's agenda, and so we can have that discussion later if you'd like.
Well, if the city attorney has a strong view and the budget office has a strong view, I suppose that's good enough for me. I hope we don't take... Start taking just the most conservative approach because of the lawsuit and sort of default to the general fund. Having been intimately involved with that lawsuit, I could make a very convincing argument that these are... That this is an appropriate expenditure of the Water Bureau, because but for the water main break, this damage wouldn't have occurred. So I, you know, I'm pleased that we're settling up the claims. I'm just still not persuaded that it has to be general fund resources, but...
It looks like Robert Taylor is here to shed some light on this issue.
Yes, Robert Taylor, chief deputy city attorney. Can you restate the question so I understand what's being asked?
Well, the budget director has walked us through the changes. One of them is that we'll be settling some claims of property owners who are impacted by water main break. I support that. The question is, why are we taking it out of general fund contingency rather than out of the utilities' resources?
That's a very good question, Commissioner, and there's another ordinance coming up later today on the process for settling those claims. It's item 599. So there was some discussion about what is the appropriate source of funds for these settlements, and for the utilities, there's obviously limits under the charter for what the funds can be used for. And so in an abundance of caution, we believe that we should not use the Water Bureau's ratepayer funds for that, and instead, it's better at this point because there are general fund resources available to use those.
And so, and your view would be different if there had been a clear finding on risk management of liability?
If there had been a clear finding by risk management on liability, then perhaps the risk fund would have been an appropriate place. But because risk had made the finding that they did, the risk management fund was a difficult fund to tap, and because of the ratepayer limitations, the water fund was difficult to tap, there was, given the timing, this general fund balance that was available. And so in an abundance of caution, in order to find a resolution so that these claims could get paid in a timely way, the general fund was identified as a reasonable source.
Okay. Well, again, I support the decision to settle these claims. I have some ongoing concerns about the decision to use general fund rather than Water Bureau resources, but I... Given the timing of this, I'm satisfied with your explanation for now, so thank you.
Very good. Colleagues...
Very good. Colleagues, are there any amendments anybody would like to put on the table to the OEO? Public testimony on this item, Carla?
Yes, we have two people signed up for 583, Charles "Bridge Crane" Johnson and Maggie.
And folks, today we'll go to two minutes for testimony, because we have, like, the longest agenda I've ever seen. So, keep your remarks, two minutes, please.
583, 584.
We are talking, yeah, the ordinance 583, the resolution 584, that is correct.
I've got a separate sign-up sheet for 584.
Well, we've read them together, so anybody who'd like to testify on 583 or 584, this is their opportunity to do so. Good morning.
Good morning. Charles "Bridge Crane" Johnson, and it's not every day that I get to come here and testify on "OEO, OEO," but here we are. So, liability, given, you know, we have not talked about the tragic situation for certain Parks and Recreation employees, and I hope that regardless of how much of a long shot it may be, that if September comes and we have laid off employees, I hope they will have the moral vision to sue this city for money from the Water Bureau or the general fund, either one. I think Commissioner Fish's thinking is very clear and rational, that when a water main breaks, it's unlikely that anybody is going to challenge in court that the Water Bureau's funds should be used to compensate people who have suffered damages from a water main break. It's not a very long stretch of logic to say that the Water Bureau has a duty to be informed about the status of its at-risk pipes. It was unable to properly find the risk there and mitigate it, and so the burden for these damages does lie solely with the Water Bureau, and it's sad to see money go out of the general fund for a city that can't even maintain all of its community centers open coming this fall. I know that you've had to do some hard work and make some trade-offs, but I really don't think that this city council can take pride in the outcomes from this budget. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Hi, Maggie, Portland Homeless Town Hall. So, the water main breaks, and, you know, someone has to be responsible. Michigan, you know, they did their damage to the lower-income communities, and they have to be responsible for that, but they made the communities take them all the way to the Supreme Court because they didn't want to pay for the damage they did. Okay, so, we've got these contractors who violate their contracts, like, we've got bathrooms down again at the Salvation Army. We know it's closing, but, you know, you can sue those contractors, or, you know, some lawyer out there can sue you guys because you didn't monitor your contractors when they were violating their contracts. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Jeanne Knett. Okay, trying to remember when I left Salem, it was a while ago, but before I left, it seems to me that they had said, some of the homeowners up here in St. John's said, that their tax, I mean, their water rates went up three times in one year. I haven't asked anybody about this lately, but it seems to me that, I agree, if it's, if it's a main, it shouldn't come from Slush Fund, it should come from the water people. That's all I'm going to say. I don't, I just don't know how you guys do the money. Maybe I do need charts, ma'am.
Very good, thank you. Does that complete-
I have two more, Lightning and Onisha Cochran.
I was on 584, that's why, why I questioned you. She didn't read my name, I was on 584.
Yeah, that's fine, come on.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Lightning. Basically, on that water main, again, Commissioner Fish made it very clear, it should have come out of the Water Bureau or the Risk Management Fund. And, again, the attorney said something about the charter, we need to look at that, and we don't really have the time, so I kind of questioned that at the end of this. And I think what we're seeing here is that, you know, we're following the Oregon State local budget law, and I guess you can maneuver the funds around the way you feel appropriate, but I don't feel this is appropriate. Now, again, the overall amount we're transferring is, again, from the Transportation Operating Fund of $11,500,000, so the small amount on the water main is only $250,000. Now, where I have a problem with the transferring the funds, when we're using the term on grant funds and using those type of terms, is that I'd like to have more of a study from the federal and the state level on, are we getting the appropriate funds from the federal level in the last couple of years? And is that due to the relationship that Mayor Wheeler has with our good friend President Trump? And so, I'm pointing the finger at the mayor, and I'm asking, do you know how much money we've gotten in the last two years compared to in the last four years? And it's our number down, is that why we're having to come up with money now to cover, which I would consider almost losses here, of not getting the appropriate federal funds? And so, I'd like to have a study done on that in the last two years, and I'll point the finger at Mayor Wheeler, if we're not getting adequate federal funding anymore, it's because of your relationship with President Trump, and not understanding your job is also to make sure that we have that flow of federal funding coming to the city from the federal government and the state, and that is all your jobs up here. That's why you're sitting up here as elected officials.
Thank you, your time's up. Good morning.
So, one-term mayor.
Good morning, my name is Onisha Cochran, and as a woman of the African-American community, I beseech you to take a very close look at the budgeting as it pertains to the African-American community. I realize 584 is geared toward Wilsonville. However, people in Portland are suffering from lack of budgeting as it pertains to the health and wealth being of our African, of your African-American citizens. Are you aware that a prominent African-American leader and executive director of Miracles Club is dying in his house with days to live because his organization does not offer insurance? Most nonprofit organizations do not offer insurance. He served this community well almost 30 years, and he never was able to go to the hospital like the rest of us. I think that is implorable. Many things are affecting the African-American women in this community for lack of appropriate services, namely the Diane Wade House. Mayor is one of the highest elected officials. I would like to discuss this with you. My last item on my agenda is for Coffee Creek inmates. Eighty-five percent of the inmates in Coffee Creek are there because of drug-related issues. However, drug treatment is not offered on a macro level to inmates who have done time in Coffee Creek, and that is a huge problem. They get out with nowhere to go and with no beginning to understand how to deal with their drug treatment, and I think these are issues that need attention as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any further discussion on the ordinance 583? That is an emergency ordinance, so I'm going to hold off on that for a moment, because we need Commissioner Udaley to come into the room. Any further discussion on the resolution 584? Oh, you have more to add?
Oh, no, I was just waiting to see if there are additional questions.
Oh, well, okay, I don't believe we have any, so at this point, we'll just call the roll on 584, the resolution, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Fritz?
R.
Aye. Wheeler?
I. I was like, this is not Pirate's Day, is it?
Sorry.
I vote aye. The resolution is adopted, 584, and we need Commissioner Udaley for 583.
I don't even know why I was thinking of saying that.
I don't know if I want to know.
It's not even 10:30.
Greetings.
My apologies.
No worries. Carla, could you please call the roll on item number 583, the ordinance?
Fish? Well, this is a pretty straightforward ordinance, and, again, I want to be clear, I support the council decision to reimburse property owners affected by the water main break. I believe I have a respectful disagreement about where, the options that we have available to us in terms of where the funds come from. However, based on the position that the city attorney's taken and explained to us, I'm satisfied for now, and we'll, I'll want to revisit this question in the future, and so I'll vote aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Commissioner Fish, I sincerely appreciate you raising these questions, all of which I also discussed with staff. Let's have a fuller discussion under the Water Bureau item later on today. Thank you very much, staff, thank you Director Kennard for all of your work on the budget, and also Jane Marie Ford.
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. We'll now move to item 603, please.
603, adopt the annual budget of the city and establish appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020.
Colleagues, this is a second reading of the adopted budget ordinance. As you'll recall, I set out this budget process to initiate several changes to make our budgeting process more transparent and accessible to the public. The budget office, CBO, has developed an online dashboard that not only includes information to help members of the public understand and navigate the budget process, but it also empowers members of the public to engage with the many layers of our total citywide budget. This new dashboard offers a one-stop shop for people to find the information that they need and that they want on the city's budget. Instead of thumbing through over 1,000 pages of the adopted budget document or searching the many pages on the city's website for information on the city budget process, you can now visit this dashboard and self-navigate to the information that you want to find. I encourage everyone to visit the site, it is portlandoregon.gov/budget, and select the adopted budget visualization. There you will find information on and helpful links for key components of the city's budget process, interactive data on the city's programs, revenues and expenses, and detailed information on budget decisions from this year's budget process. I'm proud to say that this is a new, cutting-edge model for communicating budget information, and in fact, the company Tableau has requested that the city budget office lead a national webinar to demonstrate and instruct other cities on our construction and the use of this tool. Again, you can find this new information, the budget visualization tool, at portlandoregon.gov/budget. So, Carla, this is a second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. We've had lots and lots and lots of testimony on this item. Colleagues, are there any other questions before I call the roll on the budget? Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Well, Mayor and colleagues, on May 23, the council voted to approve our annual budget. Since then, the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission has given their blessing. Therefore, today's vote is a formality, and I don't intend to repeat all of my remarks from the last vote. I do, however, want to highlight a few things. First, this is Mayor Wheeler's third budget, and the third time that he has achieved broad council support for his budget. So, Mayor, thank you to you and to your team for leading us through this process.
Thank you.
Second, this year we tried a new budget process, essentially modified zero-based budgeting. It was an improvement and helped uncover a significant structural gap at parks. So, I want to give a big shout-out to the city budget office for their work in helping us get to this day. I believe our public outreach for the budget is still a work in progress, and I believe we can and must do better. Next, I'd like to acknowledge a number of important items that were included in the budget but didn't grab the headlines. They include additional resources for supportive housing, a combined utility rate increase below 5%, and on the Bureau of Environmental Services side, which is two-thirds of your bill, the increase is below 3%, which is below the rate of inflation, small investments in the Portland Rose Festival and the Portland Film Office that generate big returns for our local economy, funding for the next phase of our work to clean up the Willamette River, support for important environmental priorities like brownfield cleanups and a dark skies initiative, an age-friendly coordinator position in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and almost $700,000 to cover ongoing operations and maintenance of new parks facilities, many if not most of which are in East Portland. Let me close with a word about parks. Director Long and I are working closely with human resources to identify openings at parks and at the city for employees facing layoffs. We are very encouraged by our progress to date. This summer, we will take a deep dive to identify new models for funding parks going forward. My goal over the next two to three years is to put parks on a solid and sustainable foundation. We are open to all creative ideas for how to achieve that goal. Finally, I want to thank my colleagues. Developing a budget is one of our most collaborative undertakings. It has been a pleasure to work with each of you and your offices to craft this budget. I vote aye.
Udaley?
This budget, I think largely reflects our values and priorities as a council. It also reflects some compromises that were hard to swallow. Not everyone got, no one got everything they wanted, but we did fund many vital and urgent programs and initiatives. The ones that I am most thankful for is the ongoing funding for the Joint Office for Homeless Services, funding for the office that serves landlords and tenants. As we increase regulation, we need to support landlords and tenants in understanding our policies and their rights, as well as the complete count for the upcoming census. There's many, many more, but I'm grateful that we found funding for those, and I vote aye.
Fritz?
Thank you to everybody who's been involved, and obviously, this, in many ways, is a status quo and compromise budget, as my colleagues have said, with the exception of Portland Parks and Recreation. The cuts we're taking to parks are painful, and no one on council is happy with these cuts, however they are necessary. Under the leadership of Commissioner Fish and Parks Director Adina Long, a plan will be developed that will provide for the long-term viability of a vibrant park system. In the short term, there is disappointment and sadness, and I will commit to being part of the conversation to look for that ongoing sustainable funding. The council continues to invest in housing and houseless services. We continue to need the federal government to address those issues at a national level. I'm encouraged to see the regional level and the state level has finally come to the realization this is not just a Portland problem. Los Angeles has made significant investments in housing, passing a $1.2 billion bond for housing, and yet their homeless population jumped from 16, jumped 16% from 18 to 19. So, there does need to be a massive national investment in housing, and unfortunately, that doesn't look like it's going to happen. In the meantime, the council, under Mayor Wheeler's leadership, is funding the Joint Office of Homeless Services at the requested level. So, thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for working with your colleagues to adopt this compromise budget. Commissioner Fish, thank you for bringing forward a responsible, even if painful, budget for parks. That does put parks on a more sustainable path. Commissioner Udaley, I particularly appreciate your anti-displacement funding and your steadfast commitment to making sure that we do have measures in place before we enact further measures which may cause more demolitions and displacement, so thank you especially for that. Commissioner Hardisty made her comments last week. It's clear that she shares the rest of the council's commitment to our city employees and to our vulnerable community members. And as Commissioner Udaley said, this budget is a moral document that reflects our values and principles, which are all shared by everybody on the council. I acknowledge the excellent work done by the city budget office in a challenging year with new budget software and interim budget director Jessica Kennard. Jessica Kennard and her team did an excellent job. Thank you so much. Thank you to all the community- Thank you so much. Thank you to all the community members who took time to attend the forums. It's wonderful to see so many different folks attending, especially when we hold them in evenings when people can come in. Thank you for all of the written comments. I was overwhelmed by the amount of emails that came in and was not able to keep up with all of them. So please know that they were read, and I was appreciative of the urging. We can never do everything that everybody wants us to do, and so that's the challenge of being on the council, is that we have to consider all of the values and not only the ones that come bubble up to the top of public attention. The council, however, could not pass a responsible budget without hearing from each community member on what's important to you. Thank you to my staff for all your work on the budget, Claire Adamczyk, Christina Nieves, me, San Juan, Cynthia Castro, and Yosene Carrillo. I could not do this job without you. And in particular, thank you to my chief of staff, Tim Creel, who's been with me since day one and hopefully will be until the end of next year. Aye.
Wheeler.
Well, first of all, let me just thank my colleagues. I'm very pleased with the collaborative effort that has led to this budget. As Commissioner Udaley said, nobody got everything they wanted. The reality is, it doesn't work that way. There is always compromise, give and take to be had. But on the whole, I'm very proud of the work that we've collectively done for this budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020. The budget reflects a collective commitment to housing and addressing the homelessness crisis, supporting equitable outcomes and fostering equitable prosperity, so that as our economy continues to grow, Portlanders benefit regardless of who they are, fiscal sustainability and intergenerational equity, clean and safe communities, and importantly, in my opinion, improving and streamlining both city processes as well as constituent response. We invested in housing and homelessness. While we were certainly required to make some challenging budget decisions this year, I'm very pleased that we were able to preserve and continue progress on critical and urgent housing and homeless needs. This budget includes almost $10 million to continue critical services that otherwise would have been cut, and it adds new services in the Portland Housing Bureau's budget. I'm particularly pleased about our continued investments in homelessness services and the fact that this budget provides nearly $7 million in funding to continuing the current service levels through the Joint Office of Homeless Services. That's everything from prevention to shelter services, transitioning people off the street into housing, and providing services to help people be successful in that housing. This budget also invests in innovative new services, including $500,000 for drug and alcohol treatment services for those who are the most chronically homeless. It includes anti-displacement approaches. It provides funding for a partnership in a new navigation center to make sure that chronically homeless people are connected to whatever services they need to get off and stay off the streets. I'm particularly excited about the inclusion of the new Hygiene Street Response Program. This pilot provides mobile bathrooms and showers to ensure access to basic hygiene needs for those who are homeless, and the provision of low-barrier job training for individuals who want to work as station attendants. We invested in supporting equitable outcomes and fostering equitable prosperity. And some of the highlights there, just quickly running through the list, we continued our current support for Portlanders United Against Hate. We supported the Portland Means Progress Initiative to ensure that prosperity is shared across all Portlanders, $100,000 for the Hill Block Project, $50,000 for the Cully Project, $75,000 to help foster the albino vision over by the Rose Quarter, staffing for the Portland Commission on Disability, creation of new citywide accommodations and inclusions through the establishment of a fund for employees with disabilities, and a new person in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to focus on ensuring that Portland is planning for an age-friendly future, as Commissioner Fish indicated. We're supporting the 2020 Census Outreach, the Neighborhood Prosperity Business Network, and the Mercatus, my people's market, will all continue to receive funding. We invested in financial stability and intergenerational equity, and we prioritized costs that I believe will lower our out-year costs and increase revenue collection. Some of this stuff wasn't exciting, but it was important. We did a lot of work collectively on it. That includes the integrated tax system. That includes making sure that operation and maintenance dollars followed new projects in parks that we had collectively supported. And we also provided resources to help provide a runway for the Parks Bureau to plan for its future. We invested in clean and safe communities. That includes the new hygiene program I just amended, mentioned the funding for the Rapid Street Response Program, which is a great opportunity for this city moving forward, and funding for a second year of the Keep It Pretty Rose City Initiative to engage people in the public who want to help pick up litter in our streets. We supported the Clean Air Construction Standard, and we provided funding for the Cease Fire Program in the Office of Youth Violence Prevention. And finally, we invested in improving city services, and that includes a significant commitment to the new 3-1-1 system and a budget note to solidify the development of that system. We preserved the Rapid Response Vehicle that was at risk of being cut in the fire barrel, and we increased funding to ensure that public records requests are facilitated more quickly. I'd like to just make a couple of thank-yous here in closing. First of all, Director Kennard, for what I believe has been outstanding leadership over the course of the last year, and to all members of your budget team, they've provided great insight, great support to the city council. It goes without saying that we thank our community budget advisors, including Frida Christopher, Shodizonno, Pam Knowles, Danijka Otero Serrano, Andrea Pelluso, all of whom spent many, many hours without staffing, going through the budget, learning the budget, and giving us really good advice and counsel. I'd also like to thank the Bureau Advisory Committee members for all of the bureaus across the city. Public engagement has been a very important process. We experimented with some new community engagement opportunities. I agree with Commissioner Fish that over the course of the next year, we're going to get feedback on those various types of community engagement and hopefully settle on some strategies that we think are the best overall. Lastly, I'd like to thank Kristin Dennis, Andrea Valdarama, and many other people on my staff who worked for the last year on this budget. Thanks, everyone. I vote aye. The budget's adopted. Time to start working on the next one.
[laughing]
Item five, thank you. 585.
Approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission Fiscal Year 2019-20 Budget.
Colleagues, we're here to approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Fund Budget. Who thought we were done with budgets? The city's allocation to the MHCRC operating budget is nearly $315,000, and the amount is included in the city's approved fiscal year 2019-2020 appropriations. Speaking today is our panel, Leif Hansen, who's the Commissioner Chair, Sue Disciple, and both of these individuals, of course, are appointees to the commission. Julie Amelchuk, Program Manager to the MHCRC, is also here to answer any questions that anybody may have. Good morning.
Good morning. I didn't bring a musical instrument, but I am here to highlight a couple of the MHCRC activities from the past year and to seek your approval for our 1920 Fund Budget. I believe you've got the proposed budget in your meeting packet. We've handed out a copy of our annual report as well. As a reminder, the MHCRC is an intergovernmental partnership among Gresham, Fairview, Portland, Troutdale, Wood Village, and Multnomah County. Each of these jurisdictions appoints citizen representatives to the commission. I am one of those appointees from the city of Portland. The MHCRC has oversight, enforcement, and public benefit responsibilities for the cable services franchises with the cities and the county. Portland has two cable service franchises with Comcast and CenturyLink. There's four total within the commission's purview. As highlighted in the annual report, the MHCRC deals with ever-changing technology to support community needs for local authority over public rights of way and compensation. We act as a consumer watchdog platform for community voices, affordable broadband networks for schools, libraries, and local governments, and also local solutions for addressing digital equity issues. Over this past year, MHCRC has provided many services to the communities and its residents. We continue to work with public schools and districts under our TechSmart Initiative for student success. Portland Public Schools, David Douglas, Centennial, and Reynolds have active grants serving Portland students. Thus far, the commission is over $11 million into the longer-term investment goal of $17 million. 220 classroom teachers in five school districts are currently supported by those resources provided under the TechSmart Initiative. The Community Technology Grant Annual Competitive Round funded six new grants with community organizations. These grants leveraged over 2.1 million in matching resources. The grants are responsible to needs identified by the community and support organizations to use technology in addressing their issues. For example, an MHCRC grant from this past year in supporting a PANOS mission to reduce disparities in economic and education for Asian and Pacific Islander communities. The grant will equip a PANOS community space in a new affordable housing development with technology for digital literacy training and broadband internet access for low-income residents. Affordable broadband has become more and more critical to our local public institutions. The MHCRC is leading a network planning effort in partnership with 18 public agencies within Multnomah County. This partnership for the current institutional network, otherwise known as the INET, provides high-speed affordable broadband connectivity to 308 schools, libraries, public agencies throughout the county. The MHCRC provides capital funding and franchise enforcement, support to Open Signal. The city's operational support grant agreement with Open Signal is on your agenda later today. City's funding leverages the MHCRC capital funding so that Open Signal can effectively use the equipment and facilities to provide services to the community. Over the past year, Open Signal produced over 2,500 hours of original local programming. They also trained over 600 residents in digital and media literacy skills. The MHCRC addressed consumer protection issues, both broadly and with individual subscribers. For example, the MHCRC worked with the cable companies on issues related to clear information on subscriber bills, on-time appointments, phone answering timeframes, and service fees. We had 181 complaints that reached resolution from the local cable TV subscribers over the past year. Coming up in fiscal year 1920, the MHCRC is engaged in a future-focused planning, considering rapidly evolving technology and public policy. Our community is increasing reliance on availability of broadband internet, very important for our agenda. We intend to work with you, your city staff, communities, to identify needs and opportunities for our broadband future. We've got a technology needs ascertainment underway in preparation for our franchise renewal negotiations with Happy to report once again that in speaking of the money side of the equation, that we once again received a clean audit for fiscal year 1819. That full document's available on the MHCRC's website. Wanted to note the downward trend that we're seeing in the cable franchise revenues. Page nine of the annual report, you'll see a graph showing this trend, and it's a continuation of the trend from, that we reported on last year. But for the first time in franchise history, the actual revenue for 2017-18 decreased 7% over the previous fiscal year. Based on the first three quarters of 1819's revenue, we're projecting another 6% decrease for the current fiscal year. MHCRC's been closely monitoring the trend, anticipating implications for franchise fee revenue for local governments and for revenues that support the commission's community grants and other programs. 1920, our budget reflects a projected decrease in franchise fee and PEG INET fee revenue. Surprisingly, the total number of cable TV subscribers actually increased in 2018, as reported by the cable franchise companies. We're conducting a franchise audit to better understand the data and why the revenue dropped while overall subscribers actually increased. The MHCRC proposed 1920 Fund Budget is in your meeting packet as an attachment to the ordinance. Annual budget allocation for all jurisdictions collectively fund about half the MHCRC total operating budget. This coming year's allocation is $314,826, representing about 6% of the franchise fees collected by the city. Remaining portion of our budget's funded by other resources, mostly to administer the dedicated capital fee revenue and related programs. And before closing, I want to thank the mayor and council for supporting the countywide partnership. 25 years is our anniversary this year. Also, want to thank you for the new bureau architecture. Appreciate that. And your recent appointment of Elizabeth Perez as interim director and also our staff director. Looking forward to working with her more over the coming year.
Great. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you very much for your report. Thank you for serving. I think this is one of the, the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission is one of the most powerful volunteer jobs in Portland, given the authority that you have and the ability to collaborate with people from other parts of the region. So thank you for your work. I'm curious as to why, if cable subscribers are up, why is the revenue down?
Yeah, it is. It's an interesting question. We actually don't have the answer yet. The data, the subscriber data comes in late, and we just received it in the last 30 days. So we've asked those same questions of the companies to better understand whether the data is accurate or whether there is an underlying reason. So we will discover what that is, and we can certainly report back.
I know in the past, we sometimes have very nice settlements after audits of those kinds of things. It could, though, be that the people, more people are subscribing, but they're buying cheaper services.
That certainly could be one explanation. Yep.
Thank you very much. Please let us know when you find out.
Thank you.
Very good. Does that complete your presentation?
It does, yeah.
Thank you both. Great. I don't see any further questions. Is there public testimony on this item? Carla?
Yes, we have three people signed up.
Very good. Thank you.
Charles, Bridge Crane, Maggie, and Giann.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. And I wish that we'd heard a little bit more about the regulatory aspects of the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission, because I'd really like to be able to balance in my mind what we're saying about Comcast and what the Honorable Timothy A. Bradshaw finds about Comcast. Case number 16-2-18224-1, up in Seattle, not an Oregon case. But my guess is that if the headlines in the media say that Comcast broke the law 445,000 times to take advantage of consumers, that probably almost every complaint that a local person made to the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission may be substantiated. So, you know, Portland and Vancouver, Oregon and Washington, we're pretty much the same people. Pretty much the same things happen. So it would be pretty much miraculous if Comcast was a spotless, honest actor in this market. But in the state of Washington, the headlines say they broke the law 445,000 times. Make it off with just a $9.1 million settlement, probably under appeal, because at the rates we're paying for Comcast, God knows, they can afford some lawyers and a whole British television network called Sky. So I hope that everybody on the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission will add that context to the way they process subscriber complaints and make sure that in our service area, the areas that you have constituents in, we make sure that Comcast, with its highly profitable business, is conducting itself honestly. And I hope that the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission would actually, it's probably in their report, hopefully we'll find it online, list the exact number of customer complaints and outcomes. Thank you very much.
Morning.
Hi. So I want to talk about something related to this, which is AT&amp;T, which the government sued AT&amp;T for doing the same thing, and yet you reward them with a contract. So I would like to say to you, again, about contractors, is sometimes your own contractors that you're paying are ripping off the very people that you paid them to help. That's what I want to say. That's, that's what I want to say.
Very good morning.
Good morning. Giann Canet. Last time I had anything to do with Comcast or anything, I don't even know, was when they were paying their taxes. Do they ever pay their Oregon taxes? Does anybody care whether they pay that three, three, three thing? I don't know. But, the fact is that being the mayor of Portland, if you have a company like Comcast in our state, and you see that within your jurisdiction, they're not paying their taxes at the end of the year, shouldn't there be something you do besides reward them? You know? I'm just curious, because that really bothers me. It bothers me when I read, now, this is like a year and a half ago, before I came up here, how many companies there were in Portland, Oregon, that actually were not being followed through to pay their taxes. As far as I know, they had no extra fees, if they did pay it, for paying it way, way late and having to be forced to do it. And can't we come up with better companies in the state of Oregon and Portland, too, where they are more set on helping the community instead of taking away from the budget of our city and town? Thank you very much for your time.
Fair taxes, stable budgets, would be beautiful world.
Does that complete public testimony, Carla?
Yes, that's all.
This is an emergency item. We'll wait till Commissioner Fish returns.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Carla, could you please call the roll on item five eighty-five, approving the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget?
Fish? Thank you for your presentation and all your good work.
Aye.
You daily?
Aye.
Fritz?
I am a huge fan of the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission. Thank you for your annual report. Huge fan of the Office for Community Technology. Julia Melchuck, thank you for all of your work over many years. Mayor, thank you for appointing Elizabeth Perez the deputy director, and also restructuring it, as was mentioned in the presentation. This is a small but mighty bureau that brings in millions of dollars of revenue, and then the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission is authorized to give some of that revenue to community purposes, which are detailed in this report. So, it's really important that we, we do close the loop with this report every year. Thank you so much. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, as you heard, the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission is a longstanding and important intergovernmental relationship, and includes Gresham, Fairview, Troutdale, Wood Village, and Multnomah County, and of course, the city of Portland. Portland's particular appropriation goes to administer about six million annually in community technology-related benefits throughout the city and the county. So, these grants help the city meet the goals of the Digital Equity Action Plan to better serve our residents. And I want to thank Leaf and Sue for their service on this commission, their citizen volunteers, so they do not get paid for the hard work that they do. And I believe that they've represented the city and its residents extremely well in administering public benefits through the jointly negotiated cable franchise agreements. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thanks for the presentation. Next up, item five eight six, please.
Direct Portland Parks and Recreation to amend the two thousand and twelve, Washington Park Transportation and Parking Management Agreement with Metro and Washington Park Cultural Institutions to provide increased levels of service.
Commissioner Fish?
Colleagues, in two thousand and twelve, Portland Parks and Recreation entered into a Washington Park Transportation and Parking Management Agreement with other cultural institutions in Washington Park. The agreement is due for an update. Today, we will receive a presentation from Victor Sanders, Portland Parks and Recreation Program Coordinator, and Heather McCary, Executive Director for Explore Washington Park. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners and mayor. As Commissioner Fish had mentioned, my name is Victor Sanders, Program Coordinator for Washington Park, and I'm joined today by Heather McCary, Executive Director of Explore Washington Park, one of our great partners up in Washington Park. As Commissioner Fish had mentioned, today's resolution directs Portland Parks and Recreation to amend the agreement we have with our cultural institution partners to reflect the latest trends in park attendance and the needs of the park. We expect the completed amendment to include three major changes. The first is additional funding for park shuttle services, additional funding for road and pathway maintenance, and additional funding for transportation planning based on the recommendations from the Washington Park Master Plan, which was approved by council, or rather, adopted by council in twenty seventeen. So, I'm very pleased to be here to share with this presentation by our partner, Explore Washington Park, on how Portland Parks and Recreation have kept our promise on that two thousand and twelve agreement to the public, to our partners, and to the neighborhood adjacent to Washington Park. So, I'll hand it over to Heather McCary. She'll give an overview of those programs and discuss a little bit about the changes to the amendment, or rather, changes to that agreement that will occur very shortly.
Good morning, commissioners and Mayor Wheeler, and thank you so much for the chance to be here. Special thanks to Commissioner Fritz, who's been so supportive these past couple of years, and to Commissioner Fish, who was there at the beginning when we got started. I'm Heather McCary, the Executive Director of Explore Washington Park. We're the five oh one C three that was created to help improve access to Washington Park and make sure people have a great experience once they're there. So, as you all know, Washington Park is home to Portland's most iconic attractions, including the International Rose Test Garden, the Oregon Zoo, World Forestry Center, the Portland Japanese Garden, Hoyt Arboretum, and the Portland Children's Museum. And access to Washington Park has always been an issue. Washington Park used to be called City Park, and in nineteen oh three, when the Olmsted Brothers came through Portland to do a plan for the parks of Portland, they said this of City Park. Already, the capacity of City Park is taxed to its utmost upon holidays and pleasant Sundays in summer. And that was in nineteen oh three. So, we fast-forward a hundred years, and that's to two thousand and twelve, and that's when the directors of the park, as well as city council and metro council, made the agreement that Victor spoke of, to improve access to the park. And it really promised two things, that we would create a nonprofit to do traffic management for the park, as well as to create a pay-to-park system so those funds could be reinvested. So, it took a couple of years, but in two thousand and fourteen, the pay-to-park system went live, and that is when we made promises to the public and through the agreement that Victor spoke of. Some of those promises included a new master plan for the park, a new nonprofit, a free shuttle, and better park maintenance and security. So, now that we have an update to that amendment before you, I wanted to provide a report card on how we're doing with those promises. One of our most visible programs is our free inner park shuttle. The shuttle links the Washington Park MAX station to downtown, excuse me, to the rest of the venues in, in Washington Park. It comes every fifteen minutes. You can track it in real time at ewp-shuttle.org. They're fully ADA accessible, and we provide about a hundred and thirty thousand rides on that annually. The new agreement has stated that this should be annual service, rather than just a seasonal service, so it'll now run daily through October, and then weekends only, November through April. We also run shuttles to overflow parking lots with buses that we bring to the lots closest to the zoo. The agreement also states that we should expand this service. We were running it just on weekends, and we're now run it Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays in the peak season, as well as large events like Zoo Lights. And we bring about seventy thousand visitors to the park each year through this service. We put customer service staff down at the International Rose Test Garden, as well as at the TriMet station. These folks are there at June, July, and August, seven days a week, and they help thirty thousand visitors annually. We wanted people to understand the park in a more holistic fashion, so that they went to the Oregon Zoo, they knew that they were also in the same park as the International Rose Test Garden, and how to get there. And so, we developed a park map with all of our partners. We hired a local artist to do the map cover this year. We printed eighty thousand of these maps and distribute them throughout the city of Portland. And then, we've also done a lot with work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've developed a DEI committee to coordinate all the efforts of the park venues around this work. This committee is developing a work plan, and we've set aside funds through the new agreement, as well as through a MetroArcheo grant, to actually implement that work plan. So, certainly been busy over the past couple of years, as is Portland Parks, in delivering some of these promises.
One of the really exciting aspects of the pay-to-park program that's provided through this agreement is that we now have a dedicated funding source to address some of the deferred maintenance issues in Washington Park. So, for example, this photograph showing just a simple paving project in front of the Oregon Zoo in Washington Park. And so, again, this, this funding is allowing us to rebuild the infrastructure within the park that we don't have general fund ability to do. And then, we also have dedicated park rangers as well that are provided through this agreement, three full-time park rangers, as well as seasonals that provide security throughout the park and on the trails, and the pathways and the roads within the park. And then, of course, we also have the Washington Park Master Plan, which, as I had mentioned, was adopted previously in twenty seventeen. That's an update to the nineteen eighty-one master plan that we, we just completed. And so, one of the outcomes of that master plan was a transportation management plan, which we've committed to come back to council in two thousand and twenty-two to complete. And so, this new agreement provides funding to complete that plan as well.
And all of our work up there is definitely having an impact. We do annual intercept surveys of over a thousand people in the park each August. We started in twenty fourteen. And through those surveys, we've been able to see a twenty-three percent decrease in the percent of people getting to the park using their personal vehicle use, a fifty-nine percent increase in transit use, a over two hundred and fifty percent increase in the percent of people using our free shuttle, and then an over a thousand percent increase in Uber and Lyft use. But, of course, in two thousand and fourteen, not a lot of people were getting in the car with a stranger, so we started at a low number. Right now, about park-wide, nine percent of guests get to the park with Uber and Lyft, and then that increases when you look at the garden to about sixteen percent. So, these are all great numbers that we're excited to share, and we're even more excited to share that in light of the eleven percent increase in park-wide attendance that we've seen in peak season since two thousand and fourteen.
Just as I interrupt you there.
Yeah.
I really, the ride share really is people driving. It's just they're not parking.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I...
Yes, and so, we definitely, it brings its own challenges. I think it does increase access to the park in that they're not needing to find a parking space, so there's some benefits, but it certainly brings its challenges with it.
Yeah, it's congestion and pollution, and...
Yeah.
I really detest the term ride share, because it suggests that two people are getting somewhere they need to go together.
Yeah.
I agree.
You're hiring a driver in a car.
Yeah.
I just wanted to note, and I know you have been paying attention to this, because we, we want to increase the number of transit and shuttle.
That's definitely right.
I'd like to see that as a thousand percent increase.
Yeah, I'm glad that you guys are highlighting that, because it's one of our top issues that we want to address.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Very excited about the other mode, mode share.
Me too. A fifty-nine percent increase in transit is really exciting.
If only we could do that citywide.
Yes.
It would be transformative.
Yes, it would be.
Re-transit, that's how you do it.
Oh, I agree, Commissioner. Thank you.
So, we definitely have things on the horizon. Victor mentioned the transportation management plan that was outlined in the master plan. We'll be doing a scope for that work this summer and fall. We hope to go to bid this winter. We also really want to be an incubator for new transportation initiatives for the whole city. With that in mind, we're, we're working really aggressively to turn our inner park shuttle fleet into a fully electric fleet, potentially, and hopefully by next summer. And then, of course, we're always looking at ways to use data to better inform our policies. So, I've been at the park for five years, and in those five years, it's become clear that Washington Park is really becoming a destination park. And it's very heartfelt that I tell you that I am honored to be a part of Washington Park's story. I take it really seriously, the work that we're doing up there. And Explore Washington Park is committed to ensuring that was, as we open our backyard to the world, we maintain access to this amazing place for our entire Portland community.
So, that concludes the presentation. Just as a representative from Portland Parks, we've just been incredibly pleased with the success of Explore Washington Park and with the success of the program, and I think it's something that the city should absolutely be proud of. I know that the partnerships with our cultural institutions up there are the strongest they've ever been, so the Oregon Zoo, Hoyt Arboretum, Portland Children's Museum, Portland Japanese Garden, World Forestry Center, all of those folks meet monthly at the leadership level to discuss these issues. And so, it's really exciting that we've been able to build this infrastructure with excellent results, and so, this amendment to that agreement really builds on that to create a legacy project for Washington Park that'll continue on for many, many years. Happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments from my colleagues before we go to public testimony?
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your great work.
Carla, how many people do we have signed up?
We have two people signed up.
Very good.
Maggie and Giann.
Maggie, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Maggie, Portland homeless town hall. Okay. I would like to reference Ernest Hemingway right now, and a story called "The Short and Happy Life of Frances McQuabbert." If you've ever heard of it, I highly recommend you read it. Although, I don't like zoos, because I don't like the idea of animals being in a zoo, I recommend, I recognize the horrible situation we're in with, with global climate change, and how we're losing habitat for wild animals. And I see the exceptional educational opportunity that this brings for children and, and adults. And I'm wondering how the zoo can bring into their educational programs about climate change and loss of habitat, and, you know, how we can live our lives, reducing, you know, dependence on bottled water and bags, and, and all sorts of things that end up in marine, in, in oceans, and, you know, I mean, two hundred dolphins were just killed, and, you know, by, by the way we live, and, and war causes all sorts of pollution. And, so, I want you to go read this story, because we need nature preserves, but not nature preserves that have to rely on hunting and driving up and killing, you know, these partially domesticated wild animals to, to fund themselves. And we want kids to grow up and realize that saving these animals' habitat is saving ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Awesome. Good morning. I was looking at that map she had of Washington Park, and I mean, I really want to ask, did Washington Park lose a couple acres somewhere in the last twenty years? But, I did want to say this, I love Washington Park more than anything in the world, and when I was younger, I went to New York, because I knew my dad was in Cali. So, it took me eight months to find me, and Frank Spock was right, because if you can make it in New York, you make it anywhere. And while I was there, I said, the most beautiful place that I've ever seen is the Rose Gardens in Portland, Oregon. I have bragged throughout all the states of the United States about certain things having to do with Portland area and the beauty that they try to reheat. I agree with what you said a hundred percent, and would rather it be a, you know, you go in in your car, and the animals actually get a, whatever.
Right.
In cages or anything. I watched Paki, and when I watched Paki, man, I watched that guy try to get out of that little water thing that they had, and he scraped his knees and cause his leg. It affected me seriously. Of course, Paki was, what, a year after, so... But, yeah, I think it's great you guys are doing all this work with Washington Park. I wish that you would do that in other parks. For instance, Holiday Park, some black gentleman walked up, hit my brother and knocked him to the ground. My brother's sixty years old, people. Then, I'm walking to Lloyd Center over to the Max of the Seventies, which is by my home, and some black guy comes up to me and tells me, he's gonna...
Could I ask you to keep your testimony, Jermaine, please, to this particular item?
I wish you guys would take care of all the parks and not just some of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you both. Carla, this is a resolution. Colleagues, any further questions? Please call the roll.
Fish? Well, first of all, I, I want to acknowledge that we, we began having this conversation in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and it was not initially viewed as the most popular idea that we've ever... 2011, 2012. And it was not initially viewed as the most popular idea that we've ever put on the table. But the idea was that we were forecasting over time, too many people driving to Washington Park, too much congestion. And we weren't collecting any revenue from many of our guests to offset the impact on our roadway. And the theory was, if you're going to drive to the park and you're going to bring your car, you ought to help offset the cost of dedicated parking and the impact on our infrastructure. It was not the world's most popular idea when we first raised it. And change is hard. But we came up with a winning model. And I think we can see from today's results that five years later, we have a lot of positive news to celebrate. I want to thank Heather McCary for her five years of service. And I want to thank all the people that serve on Explore Washington Park. It has had another therapeutic benefit, which is it has helped to bring together all of our partners in Washington Park. And each of them has a different set of issues and concerns and agenda. But this process has galvanized our partners in a very positive way. I want to thank Victor Sanders and the Parks Team for bringing this home. This is the product of what we called six-party negotiations that went on for a while. And there were lots of different views. But I'm very pleased that we've landed where we did. As we heard a few minutes ago, Washington Park is one of the jewels of our system. And this program helps us pay for the cost of maintaining some of the infrastructure. It is not a readily adaptable plan to other parks throughout the city because it's based uniquely on the fact that so many people drive to Washington Park and we can generate the revenue. But the point is well taken. I think it's a terrific report and PowerPoint. Always love to be reminded of what the Olmsted Brothers said in 1803. And what I particularly liked about the section that you culled, because I have the original report in my office, is that in those days, when they made a mistake, they just typed over it. They didn't retype the whole document like we do now. So, the Olmsted Report is actually filled with typos that had been corrected on the original draft. And some of you are old enough to remember when we used to do that. But now, you just redo the whole document. Nice piece of work. Very proud to sponsor it today and to vote aye.
Udaley?
Well, thanks for the presentation. I am particularly impressed by the fact that although we've seen visitors increase by 11%, we've seen trips in single-occupant vehicles or in cars decrease by 23%, transit increase by 59%, and shuttle increase by 279%. That's really extraordinary. I love taking the max up to the top of the park, I guess we would call it, and encourage everyone to explore that option. I vote aye.
Fritz.
I'm not usually a tunnel person, but I don't mind the max one. It's make it interesting the way that the artwork and the geological features in the elevator are. So, as long as I'm distracted, I'm not quite so aware that I'm in the middle of a mountain. So, thank you very much, Commissioner Fish. You started this. And this was really a heavy lift in your first term as Parks Commissioner. And it's really good to see the results of your efforts there coming back and bringing fruit now that you're back in charge of Portland Parks again. Thank you very much to the Coalition and the Transportation Management Team for all your work on this. Aye.
Wheeler.
I was going to note the same things that Commissioner Udaley noted. I think this is very impressive. The transit and shuttle usage in particular is impressive. And if you back into the numbers here, it says in 2018, 61.5% of the visitors drove in a personal vehicle to the park. That means nearly 40% of the people who came to the park did not. That's actually a very high percentage of people not driving to the park, but instead using transit or shuttle or rideshare, other means of getting there. So, this appears to be a success. And the hard work that people put into this in 2012, 2013, 2014 is being validated. Glad to see it. I vote aye. Resolution's adopted. Thank you. Great presentation. Next item, please. We are now finally, believe it or not, on a regular agenda. Item 598.
Appoint Sabrina Purifoy to the Open and Accountable Elections Commission and establish terms for all commission members.
This is a report. Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is to appoint the final member of the Open and Accountable Elections Commission. As you know, the commission is responsible for providing community oversight to the Open and Accountable Elections Program. Most of the commission was seated in January with many, and they've had a very ambitious timeline, have worked incredibly hard, and had wonderful output. Sabra Purifoy is currently a policy analyst for the Oregon Department of Consumer Business Services. She has years of experience in politics, law, and a passion for social equity and justice. We're very excited to have her join the commission. She was unable to be here today because she's traveling. But we wanted to do this appointment today because she's going to be able to join the commission at their meeting tonight. Here's Susan Motte, the program director, to give any additional information.
Sure. I have very little to add, other than the fact that one of the things that was very appealing on her application was that in Los Angeles County, she was the department lead for the Government Alliance on Race and Equity and wrote and implemented the Racial Equity Action Plan for her department. So, we really appreciate that perspective and value that in joining our commission.
Great. Thank you. All entertain a motion.
I'm so moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Udaley to accept the report. Commissioner Fish, seconds. Any further discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz.
I'm excited to appoint you. I know the superstar of this amazing commission. Thank you, Anna Paicio, the Deputy Director of the Program, who is the lead staff person to the commission. Susan Motte has been here just six months and has pushed amazing levels of implementation to this program. I'm very excited about it. The commission meets once a month, the third Wednesday of every month, which is tonight. If you're interested in attending, it's held in the Pettigrove Room here in City Hall from 6:30 to 8:30. And everyone in the public is welcome to come and observe. Aye.
Wheeler.
I continue to be amazed by the quality of the volunteers we have serving on our boards and commissioners. And this is certainly no exception. I really appreciate this. I vote aye. Appointment's approved. Thank you. Next item, 599.
Establish process to resolve claims related to the water main break on March 16, 2019, and authorize payment of claims.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your partnership on this. Obviously, I think most people in Portland know about this water main break on March 16. Here, we are now on June 19, which in city terms is really lickety-split. On the other hand, if you're a property owner or a resident or an employee at one of the businesses that was affected, it's been a long road to getting to resolution. And I've learned so much since I've been put in charge of the Water Bureau. The pipe was over 100 years old. And so, of course, I and everybody else said, well, that's a really old pipe. Of course, it broke. It turns out that that pipe was supposed to last at least 200 years. So, it was not a pipe that was, we build our water system, your water system, to last four centuries. So, this was not something that should have been anticipated, which is one of the reasons that the risk management folks determined that it was not an act of negligence on the city's part. On the other hand, reasonable people would say, whoever's fault it was, it certainly was not the fault of the people who got flooded. And so, when I talked with the mayor about it, that was a kind of basic agreement that we should make sure that people who were impacted by this failure of city infrastructure were compensated. La Plata Market in Delhi, for example, had to shut down their entire business. And so, very much appreciate Chief Deputy City Attorney Robert Taylor, who, once the risk had made there, determination and there was a process, because obviously, we don't want, after something happens, for cash being handed out on street corners without a due process. And so, Robert Taylor volunteered to figure out a process that could then very, as quickly as possible, make the payments to those who have legitimate damages, including economic losses. And so, now I'll just have Robert Taylor say things that, say what I probably may not, should not have said just then, or the right framing of how to say what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robert Taylor, Chief Deputy City Attorney. I think what you said was perfect and described the situation perfectly. This was an exceedingly rare event that did have a large scope of impact. And the folks in risk management do an excellent job every day on behalf of the city handling the more usual, regular types of claims. But this was really exceedingly rare and large in scope. And that's why, I believe, we were asked to come up with a process to handle these claims as quickly as possible. And so, just to walk you through the process, there's a deadline to submit the claims, and that's July 15. If folks have already submitted a tort claim notice to risk, those will be forwarded to the City Attorney's Office. Folks will not have to reapply. We will treat those as the application. But our office can ask for more information if necessary. So, that is the deadline for anybody watching, July 15, to submit claims under this ordinance.
To you, right?
To the City Attorney's Office. And our address is in the ordinance for folks to find. And we're in City Hall, room 430. The types of costs that the city will pay are outlined in the ordinance. That includes economic losses, property damage caused by the water main break, including cost of repair and replace damaged property, temporary relocation, expenses, lost wages or income. The ordinance also explicitly says the types of claims that the city won't pay. And that includes property upgrades, asbestos abatement, pollution remediation, other damages, including any caused by power outages. And then, it goes on to require the City Attorney's Office to get sufficient documentation to support these claims before they will be paid. There's an authorization for the City Attorney to pay the claims that's required by the charter. There is, the ordinance establishes the source of funds. And that was part of a discussion earlier today in council as well. And then, there will be a release and assignment of claims. So, if property owners get paid, they will release their claims and then assign to the city any claims they might have against their insurance carriers. And then, finally, the deadline to resolve claims for our office is October 14. So, this will give people some assurance that if they use this process to try to resolve their claims, we will do that by October 14. If we're unable to resolve it, or if people decide they don't want to use this process, they are absolutely free to go through the regular risk management process and pursue litigation if that's what they desire to do. Great. Thanks. Any questions?
What if the...
Commissioner Fish.
What if the claims submitted exceed the amount of money we've set aside to resolve the claims?
We do not believe that will happen, first, based on the claims that have been submitted so far. Second, the plan is to collect all of the claims information by the deadline. So, we know the universe we're working with. And then, try to settle all of the claims within the limit of that fund. And having the limit of that fund and the deadlines associated with it should give us the ability to successfully resolve these claims.
Is there a scenario, though, where you may have to discount the claims because of the limited funds available?
That is, that's a possibility. And I, but we do not foresee that. But that's a possibility. And if we're forced to do that, we would try to do that in a rational way so that everybody's affected evenly.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Robert. Any public testimony on this item, Carla?
Yes, we have two people, Lightning and Maggie.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Lightning, can you turn that mic on? Someone turned it off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, my name is Lightning. I find it outrageous in the manner that you're dealing with the public on this issue. The water main broke. It flooded into their properties. Guilty as charged. There's, it's non-negotiable. Now, what you want to do is come back and counter back and say, hey, we've got this unanticipated. It's not our negligence. We're going to throw this out at you. Well, you know, here's my problem with the way you negotiate like this. It's one thing to negotiate with me like that, and I'm going to get right back in your face. But when you're negotiating with senior citizens, people that might not have the full mental capacity to deal with this type of situation, and it's causing them severe trauma, you say to them plain and simple, it's our water main, it's our water that went into your property. We're going to take good care of you. We're going to make sure you're taken care of. Don't worry about this. Don't stress out about this. We've got everything in line. But instead, you come back like a Gordon Gekko, a George Soros, and you say, well, we're going to put a cap at $250,000. And maybe you'll get paid if you get that in real fast. Are you serious? Is this the way we want the city of Portland dealing with the people out in our communities? Guilty as charged. You flooded into their properties. You're going to pay the cost. And let me tell you something. If I heard correct, some of these businesses are closed right now. $250,000 is going to go through in a second into people's basements, into certain damage. In today's world, that is nothing to cover that. Nothing if it went down into their basements and mold started happening. And then, you say you won't clean out the environmental issues. City of Portland, you're going to pay everything. That's why you're insured. That's why you have a general fund. Don't play games with the people out there that you harmed, period. Non-negotiable. And you accept all liability, City of Portland. Guilty as charged, per Lightning. Hey, uh...
All right.
Non-negotiable.
There we have it. Carla, please call the, wait, we need Commissioner Udaley here for this.
I've never seen a water main break in a city and not take responsibility.
We need...
So, if I might just make a comment here?
Commissioner Fritz.
We are making it, taking responsibility. I can't recall a time I've had testimony which is completely opposite to what we're doing here. We are saying that we're going to take responsibility. As Robert Taylor said, $250,000 should more than cover the amount of claims that we both know of and anticipate. As was mentioned earlier, we need to have a number to carry over because we're going from one fiscal year to another. So, that's why we have estimated high, so that we can pay all of the claims. And I further need to say that I'm really grateful to all of the people who contacted me. I called several of those affected personally, all really understanding, gracious, encouraging, collaborative, and merely seeking to make sure that they are made whole. And so, I really appreciate those who have been affected for their patience. And I appreciate the council for getting this done as quickly as bureaucratically possible.
Very good. And I'm waiting for Commissioner Udaley. This is an emergency ordinance. There she is. Very good. Carla, please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz.
So, this is the right thing to do. I appreciate my colleagues for doing this. And again, thank you to Robert Taylor and the City Attorney's Office for stepping in to make things right. Aye.
Wheeler.
No good deed goes unpunished. Commissioner Fritz. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please. Item 600.
Amend acquisition of public art code to expand eligible uses of the 2% funds, explicitly prioritize underserved communities, and clarify city accountability.
Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor and colleagues. I'm very pleased to make a few introductory remarks on this matter, which Commissioner Udaley and I are bringing forward. In February of 2018, Portland City Council adopted our Arts Affordability Plan. This document includes 24 recommendations on how the city of Portland can help artists afford to live and work here. We've made some great progress. And later this summer, my team will be coming back to council with an update on our work. But today, we're here to discuss the 10th recommendation in the plan, changes to the rules around our 2% for art program on page 18 of the plan. We've worked with city bureaus, the Regional Arts and Culture Council, and key stakeholders on this update. These proposed changes, if adopted by the council, will make this tool more flexible, more equitable, and we hope more effective in bringing public art to all communities in Portland. This morning, we're joined by Jamie Dumphy, Senior Policy Director from my office. This morning, we're joined by Jamie Dumphy, Senior Policy Director from my office, and the main author of the report, Tracy Schreiber, my Arts Affordability Fellow, who will be completing her fellowship with my office at the end of the summer. And Jamie will also introduce our special guest. Jamie?
Thank you, Commissioner. Also with us is Polly Ann Faith Burge with the Office of Commissioner Udaley, and I'm going to turn it over to Tracy, our special guest.
Great. Good morning. My name is Tracy Schreiber, and I'm the Arts Affordability Fellow for Commissioner Nick Fish. We also have David Huff here, our City Arts Manager with the Office of Management and Finance. We're here today to propose amendments to the percent for art code. A plan for preserving and expanding affordable art space in Portland recommended changes to the 2% for art program, and the 2018 RAC audit recommended better monitoring and oversight of RAC's work. Along with the grants and the arts tax, percent for art is one of the main programs RAC implements for the city. The proposed changes address both the plan and the audit, and will, one, clarify the code so that council, bureaus, and RAC understand who is accountable for what parts of the program and who has decision-making authority at certain junctures. Two, expand eligible uses of the 2% to include creative space and more clearly allow for activities like artists in residence. Three, more explicitly allow 2% funds to be decoupled from the triggering project site. And four, add language to encourage prioritization of underserved communities' access to art. The community mapping funding in the 2019-2020 budget will inform this priority in future art citing and activity. The offices of Commissioners Fish and Udaley worked with David Huff and OMF and alongside RAC and the city bureaus on the proposed amendments to ensure efficiency, flexibility, and clarity in the code. We're excited to bring you this proposal. We believe it represents council's commitment to supporting underserved areas by offering expanded options for arts and cultural activities and access, and clarifies the intention and the support system for a successful public art program. We welcome your questions and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our formal presentation.
That's the most succinct presentation I think we've witnessed in council.
Shortened to the point. I just had one, I'm sorry, Commissioner Udaley, did you have a question?
Polly Ann, do you want to add anything?
No, no. I mean, I think it's been really a terrific partnership with your office and RAC as well. And I'm just excited, I think, to be able to use these funds in a different way, or at least codify that for residencies and things like that. I'm really excited about that specific portion of it.
I just had a quick question related to the preserving art space or potentially artist-in-residence space. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit in terms of how the 2% would be specifically used with regard to art space? Is it rent subsidy? How does it work?
It absolutely could be, yeah. The opportunities for space are going to be relatively limited, but they are there. A great example is the Broadway Corridor project. The amount of percent for art funds could be the equivalent of adding an extra room onto a building or putting up a couple of extra walls. If you're already building it, it's not the hardest thing to add an extra room on. But it could also be rent subsidies. It could be paying artists stipend in order to use a space that already exists. We want to really give the flexibility because we know, we've heard that this is an opportunity for regular injections of art into the community. And while the uses historically in a lot of the public art we have have been great, they haven't been shared wide. And we continue to hear from artists that space is the top priority, that space is quickly going away. So any opportunity where we could add an additional room for activities in a affordable housing project, or add a room onto a new fire station, something like that where we could permanently dedicate space towards creative use, the opportunities will not be very often. It doesn't happen that we have a project of that scale, but when that is an option, the bureau working with RAC should be able to consider that as one option.
So Jamie, will there be some rules established or guidelines? And I'll put two concerns that I have on the table. Number one, let me just say, I support the value. I think it's an important value, and I appreciate your expanding in this arena, but it comes with some logistical questions.
Absolutely.
And the first is, as you get into the question of space affordability, all of a sudden, what's a large budget for RAC for the purposes that it currently is, for the actions it's currently engaged in, could see a lot of pressure, particularly given the cost of art space today in the city of Portland. So I'm wondering, number one, how you put guidelines or limits around that so you don't see a significant portion of the RAC budget suddenly being shifted to real estate efforts? The second area is around conflict of interest, because I assume it is the RAC board that would make decisions about who does or who does not get access to these funds. And I just want to underscore the usual issue we have with all boards and commissions, which is they must adhere to state ethics laws, and that means that there cannot be a conflict of interest, and they also have to guard against perceived conflict of interest. It raises questions of, do insiders get favorable treatment over, say, emerging artists or people who might be more on the fringes of the current art scene? And so I guess I'm not asking you a specific question today, except saying, as you go into this new area, you're going to need to be mindful that there are these other budgetary, administrative, and potential ethics issues that you're going to have to wrestle with.
Absolutely. With each percent for art program or project, or eligible project, it triggers a meeting between RAC and the bureaus. And there's been some historic confusion about who is supposed to start that process. A lot of times, if it's a P-Bot project, for example, the engineers are more concerned with getting the road paved and getting it paved right than having a conversation about the public art. And so often, the dollars will be put into a pool. Those conversations, basically, what this changes is that conversation at the front end. Historically, what we do is RAC will convene a panel. It is not the RAC board, but it is led by RAC staff with representative artists, and they will come to, begin to form an idea around what the bureau envisions, and if the bureau doesn't have guidance, then what this panel envisions. We've had some situations where what the bureau envisions and what the panel envisions are different, and we've clarified what that looks like. But the opportunity is now for that front-end conversation. For example, Prosper Portland has told us they would rather do one big project than 10 little projects. And they can pool those dollars and have that conversation as a collective. This wouldn't be in a private development. Percent for art programs are only triggered through public facilities. We aren't building new libraries, we aren't redoing the Portland building every day. So most of these tend to be relatively small and more discreet amounts of money. And in those cases, the way the process works now will work well then, too. We'll still be able to continue to develop art. If it moves towards the space side of things, it wouldn't infringe on RAC's budget because this is determined by a percentage of the total project.
Right. It's really the allocation of the budget once it's gone to RAC.
Right, once it's there.
It's just very, very hard, as you know, to say, no two friends.
Yes.
So there have to be very, very specific guidelines about who does qualify versus who does not qualify, and then it has to be uniformly implemented.
Absolutely.
Mayor, your comments, you know, we'll certainly, in the implementation phase, take into consideration your comments. What I'd like you to think about in terms of what we're proposing here is that we've just expanded the menu of options a little bit. And, you know, for some time, there has been a concern that the 2% for art program, because of where public buildings are generally located, tended to focus public dollars on areas that were already arts-rich. You think about where our major investments are in terms of public facilities, they tend to be in the inner core, triggering the 2%. So this conversation really began around a notion that why did we have to link the art with the actual building? That the building itself triggered the obligation to set aside the money, but could we decouple the art from the building in order to provide more equitable distribution of art citywide? That was an original vision. Because of the current focus on the need for affordable art space and other kinds of city investments along that line, the menu options have been expanded a little further to provide for that conversation as well. But it is uniquely a conversation that RAC, our partner in administering the funds, and a bureau will have at the front end in terms of going through the menu and deciding on what's the vision and how to move forward. But we'll be mindful of your concerns as we do regulations.
I appreciate that very much, Commissioner Fish.
The conversation around areas like 122nd Division being perfectly bereft of any public art, however, that may not be the right place for public art, but there are still artists there, and they have needs and community wants. So, yeah, absolutely.
It sounds like we're all in agreement on this.
I hope so.
And I appreciate that very much. Very good. Any further questions? Public testimony on this item, Carla?
Maggie signed up.
All right. Thank you all very much.
She's not speaking.
Very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Next item, please. Item number 601.
Appoint Stephanie Condor, Fernando Velez, and Jesse Ledesma to the Portland Housing Advisory Commission for terms to expire June 19, 2021.
Colleagues, the Portland Housing Advisory Commission, P-HAC, is the primary forum for the discussion of housing policy, strategy, and resources for the city of Portland. P-HAC members rise above their individual interests and affiliations to take a comprehensive approach to housing policy and strategy to support the unmet housing needs of all Portlanders. The appointments today fill vacancies on the commission with individuals that are committed to addressing the pressing housing issues in Portland and the needs of residents across the city. Stephanie Condor is the Vice President of Development for Related Northwest. She's responsible for leading and managing all aspects of development and financing for Related's affordable developments. Ms. Condor's previous experience includes portfolio management of multifamily housing, including senior housing, assisted living, low-income housing, and HUD communities. She's experienced working on complex transactions with multi-layered funding, along with new-market tax credits. Jesse Ledesma is the Director of Development at Beam Construction, overseeing ground-up and adaptive reuse projects for Beam, including commercial office developments and hospitality from sourcing all the way to completion. Ms. Ledesma served as Development Manager for Affordable Housing Projects utilizing low-income housing tax credits, as well as mixed-use urban developments for both for-profit and nonprofit ownership. She has experience working with new construction, major renovations, acquisitions, and USDA rural developments. And then, of course, Fernando Velez has nearly 30 years of experience working in banking, mortgage lending, and consumer protections. He's a first-generation Latino immigrant and helped organize the first culturally-specific financial homeownership fair in the city of Cornelius. Mr. Velez has participated on several nonprofit boards, including CASA of Oregon, Habitat for Humanity, the African-American Alliance for Homeownership, Hacienda CDC, Biennestar, and Portland Community Land Trust. I want to thank you, Stephanie, Jesse, and Fernando, for your willingness to serve on the Portland Housing Advisory Commission. I believe each of you brings very important perspectives to this housing conversation, and I look forward to your guidance as commissioners. And with that, I will turn this over to our Housing Director. Welcome, Shannon Callahan.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Callahan. I'm just here to express my thanks to all of our new appointees to the Portland Housing Commission, and thank them in advance for all of the guidance they will give us on both strategy, policy, and budget going forward. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge our two co-chairs, Shannon Singleton and Nate McCoy, for their work on the selection committee to help select these new members of our commission. So with that, I would turn it over to the committee members if they would like to speak a little bit on their own behalf.
Thanks.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jesse Ledesma, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the P-HAC, and I look forward to working through all the critical housing issues that our city faces.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for this opportunity. As a community member in Portland, and having worked on some of the homeless issues with Central City Concern, and now representing Related Northwest, I'm very excited to be a part of this and look forward to working with you all.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Mayor Wheeler, distinguished commissioners, my name is Fernando Velez. I'm an almost 30-year resident of the city of Portland. I am a longtime advocate for minority homeownership, homebuyer education, and consumer protection. I have witnessed the pitfalls of unsustainable homeownership during the recent housing crisis. I believe this could have been ameliorated through effective and risk-related home purchasing and home retention education programs. I look forward in participating in discussions on new ways that homeownership can be increased, sustained, as well as exploring and strengthening current and new affordable homebuying options. If I may insist, the positive results of meaningful homebuying and rental education programs supporting sustainable housing is undeniable and effective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Colleagues, any questions?
I move the report.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Fish, a second from Commissioner Fritz. Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
So I have just a brief comment and then kind of a charge. Monday morning, I had breakfast in Los Angeles with someone who is arguably the architect of the city's response to the homeless crisis. And we talked a little bit about differences between Portland and Los Angeles. We talked a little bit about what was working and what wasn't working in terms of strategies. Commissioner Fritz earlier today noted that in the most recent street count, Los Angeles saw 16% increase in homelessness, yet, among other things, they passed a $1.2 billion ballot measure to fund supportive housing, and they are housing people at the rate of 1,700 a month. Director Callahan would kill to have the kinds of resources to be able to find 1,700 homes every month for people in distress. The number of people living in RVs and their cars has exploded and is a number that is so shocking that it doesn't seem real. And then wherever you go in the city, because it's a city of elevated highways, freeways, there are overpasses, and so there are campgrounds everywhere. And it is an enormous challenge. Like our city, the mayor by charter is a weak mayor. Mayor Garcetti is by charter a weak mayor, and therefore has limits to what he can do. Our mayor by charter is a weak mayor. This commission-style former government is the last of its kind. And then, of course, there's the challenge that the dollars that are needed to provide the essential services to make the system successful are allocated by the county, not by the city. So the most important relationship the mayor has is with his or her counterpart at the county. It was an eye-opening conversation, particularly because LA has been in the news lately as making big investments, and yet, the problem is getting worse, and it is reaching a boil. And the kinds of conflicts that we're experiencing here are very similar to what they are experiencing, but on a much bigger scale. The mayor had recently been in Venice Beach talking about opening up a shelter and spent four hours at a meeting, taking abuse from people who didn't want the problem to be solved in their neighborhood. Well, if you go to Venice Beach in California, what you notice is there's a lot of camping actually on the beach and everywhere around. So the point of my story is that every city up and down the West Coast is experiencing a crisis. I believe that because of our size, because of the nature of the partnerships, and because of the plan, which particularly the Joint Office is charged with implementing on homelessness, I believe we're going to see progress over time, but it's going to take time. And the mayor has said it could get worse before it gets better. Los Angeles is experiencing that. It is getting worse before it's getting better. So you are coming into service at a particularly sensitive time. Your charge will be more focused, frankly, on affordable housing than homelessness because of the way we've divided up responsibilities. But it is really important that we get as much of the bond money and other resources out the door as quickly as possible in projects which address the crisis. So we are counting on you to help us get it right, and it seems like the, I don't remember the last time we had nominees to P-HAC that had the breadth of experience that the three of you have. I mean, you're an all-star panel, so thank you for serving. Here's the charge. I created the Portland Housing Bureau and created the P-HAC. And my one disappointment with the P-HAC, the Portland Housing Advisory Commission, is that we intended it to be an independent body that would, from time to time, come to council and say, the city's not going down the right path, or we disagree with an expenditure, or at budget time, we have a different view, or whatever. And it is vitally important that you maintain your independence. And it is vitally important that you maintain your independence, and from time to time, you're going to disagree with the distinguished director or with the council's direction. And what I want to charge you with is, it is in those moments that you are doing your best service in making sure we're aware of your concerns. And the only way we become aware of those concerns is if you send us a letter or some communication that says respectfully, "P-HAC disagrees with a budget proposal or a policy decision," or whatever. So that's a role that P-HAC has not played as robustly as I would have liked, and I just want to charge you with the responsibility of not only being a good steward of the policies and resources of the Bureau, but please take advantage of the opportunity to let council know when you respectfully dissent from something that's being proposed, because otherwise we won't know, and we won't have the benefit of your wisdom on something. And so please take that charge seriously. I'm very pleased to accept your nominations. You're a terrific panel. Aye.
Udaley.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. I'm really excited reading your bios about the expertise you're going to bring. And Fernando, I'm particularly interested in your ability to help in the conversation around inclusionary zoning and affordable housing and helping developers figure out how to make a pencil out, because I hear that a lot. And having never bought a home or developed a property, I can't really aid them in that endeavor, so it's essential that we have people serving the city who understand that part of the puzzle. So thank you very much. I vote aye.
Fritz.
You are going to be in the center of the storm of all of the challenges that we face as a community in providing affordable housing and housing in general. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Aye.
Wheeler.
First of all, obviously, I strongly support the work of P-HAC, and I support these nominees. None of them are what I would describe as people who would shy away from conflict, who would shy away from speaking truth to power, or coming up with ideas that they believe we, as a council, should support. Slight footnote, I want to also just note that this week, the Auditor's Office issued what I believe to be a very positive audit on the Portland Housing Bond, and I was glad to see that. Of course, part of your charge will be working with us on that and making sure that those resources are deployed to full effect to create as much workforce in lower-income housing as we possibly can with the resources that we have available. But I also just want to read into the record the mission of P-HAC, because it's worth it to mention this every opportunity we get, because it is a broad mission. The mission of P-HAC is to advise the Director of the Portland Housing Bureau, the Housing Commissioner, and the Portland City Council on Housing and Homelessness Policy, Strategy, and Resource Issues, promote improvements within the Portland Housing Bureau and the larger housing system, highlight opportunities for influence between the city housing system and other systems, as well as provide a forum for public input on housing and homelessness issues. So I agree with Commissioner Fish that, to some degree, while there are amazing people serving on P-HAC, it has felt a little bit like a Ferrari parked in the garage and occasionally trotted out to run to the grocery store. We have a really solid group of people on this commission, and the issue that you will be working on, the issues that are all interrelated that you will be working on are, right now, the most important issues in the city of Portland. And I know this because I hear about these issues 100 times more than I hear about any other issue impacting the city of Portland. So in closing, I want to say this. I thank you. All of you are super busy. All of you could be doing a million other things. There is nothing about this charge which is easy. Some of it is even downright controversial, and I appreciate, again, that we have people in this community who are willing to volunteer their time, their energy, and their talents for this kind of purpose. I'm really gratified by it, and as a fellow Portlander, my hat's off to you, and I appreciate your service. I vote aye. Port's accepted, and your appointments are confirmed. Thanks a lot, and thank you for being here today. Thank you, Director Callahan. Next item, 602, please.
Authorize a competitive solicitation for a law enforcement records management system for the Police Bureau.
Colleagues, the city owns and operates the Regional Justice Information Network called REGION. It is a records management system for police reports and related law enforcement records, which are essential to the Portland Police Bureau's operations. REGION established a governing body of more than 40 partner agencies in the two-state, five-county metropolitan region that are signatories to an intergovernmental agreement. The agreement covers cost-sharing and recovery. The number of participating agencies has dropped from 43 to only seven in recent years due to three waves of exit from REGION, placing a disproportionate share of the fixed cost of the operating system onto the Portland Police Bureau and the city of Portland. The vendor contract for the current RMS expires in July of 2021. The Bureau has contracted with a consultant to assist in the development of a procurement solicitation seeking a replacement system that can be implemented and made operational prior to the end of the current contract. The city will no longer rely on other agencies' participation to determine the costs or financial liabilities of the new records management system of the city. The new records management system will be more efficient and cost less than REGION. The project timeline to select, implement, and transition the Bureau to use of a replacement RMS by the expiration of the current contract has very little slack and requires timely action on the part of the council. Failure to complete the project by July 2021 may require the city to extend the contract with the current vendor for a full year at substantial additional expense. And I appreciate that we have Senior Program Manager Tammy Mayer here today, and we also have Ryan Lee here as well, I suppose, in backup support or to answer any questions. Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know if you want to add anything else or just answer questions.
I can add a little bit, sir. My name's Tammy Mayer. I am the Program Manager for the current REGION program, along with some other technology programs the Bureau uses. REGION was a grand idea, and it had some good minds behind it. Unfortunately, there were a lot of things that did not go the way the original planners had thought, from the governance of the system to some late adds to the system, Clark and Clackamas Counties, as well as some system complexities. We selected the system in 2012, and it went live in 2015. There have been a lot of technological advances in these systems since, and I am positive we can find a better-functioning system and a more user-friendly system and work the governance where it does not put a burden on the city of Portland to support the other partner agencies.
Commissioner Fish.
First of all, I know that you did the circuit and briefed each office on this, so thank you for taking the time, and I had a chance to have all of my questions answered. Without belaboring the point, and you alluded to it in your comments, I think one of the things we're going to need to ask the City Attorney's Office to do on a regular basis, where we partner with other jurisdictions to offset the cost of anything, which is generally a good government idea, is to highlight for us any contract where the withdrawal of other partners sticks us with the cost. I think this is kind of an eye-opening experience, because the goal of sharing the expense and thinking region-wide and et cetera was very noble, and we tend to... That's our default. We're trying to think about how do we engage partners, share the load, think regionally, have the integrated system. Those are all good things. But I think it's terribly important in the future that the City Attorney's Office or procurement highlight for us in any contract, a circumstance where other people, by opting out, can in fact shift their cost to us, because this obviously can't happen again, and we've learned, I think, a valuable lesson. So thank you for the work that you've done in addressing my concerns.
Yeah, Commissioner Fish, to that point, you know, poor AC Lee has heard me go on and on and on about this. I don't know how that contract even got signed, to be honest, and it's a legacy contract. It's been with us for some time, but I don't believe there should ever be a circumstance where we enter a cost-sharing agreement where only we absorb the liability if others make an independent decision to withdraw. So that is my first and fundamental problem with the contract as it currently exists, and so I'm very happy for us to move along. The second piece of this relates to a larger issue, and I know, Commissioner Fish, you've had a particular interest in this enterprise-wide, which is who's looking over everybody's shoulder as decisions are made about new technology platforms. And I've made it very clear that at every step, we're going to stage-gate this and make sure that we have independent eyes looking at what we are doing and how we are deploying the new platform, because I most certainly... While I wasn't here for the genesis of the previous contract, this one will most certainly have my name at the bottom of it, and I want to make sure that we do not repeat the highly negative experience of the existing REGION contract. And so I'm making that commitment to council here and now, as I've made it behind closed doors in front of the Police Bureau brass for many months now. I mean, honestly, I was amazed. I'm not an attorney, obviously, but I'm amazed that it is even legal for us to enter into a contract that we cannot back out of under any circumstances. To me, that's just crazy. So we are now at the end of this contract period, and I'm very eager for us to move on to a better product. Any further questions about this particular item? Public testimony on this item?
Yes, we have four people signed up.
Very good.
The first three, please come on up.
Thank you.
Are Maggie, Diana, and Gian.
Gian, why don't you go ahead and start for us, please?
Carla, who's the fourth? Maggie's not here.
Steve's. Maggie's here.
Me. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Gian, would you please start?
Yes, my name is Diana.
Diana, I'm sorry, I misheard. I apologize.
It's okay. And just listening to what was currently discussed, I think that it's absolutely great that we are going to be moving on from this contract. It is something that is pulling resources in an unnecessary way at this point that could be allocated to other aspects, you know, that are needed in our city. It was astonishing to hear that. Out of 43, we are now down to seven. That is a really, really big drop in a number. And I really like to highlight what Commissioner Fish pointed out in regards to making sure that as we move forward from this, that we're highlighted and that any partners who are withdrawn, that it's notified immediately. My question is that who is going to be appointed to be that person to look over the shoulder and keep accountability and maintain due diligence? Aside from that, that is all I have to say. I'm in full support of this.
Thank you.
This is hard for me, because I touch you a lot of cops all the time. And basically, I don't know if the new system's going to work better, but I do know that I keep hearing this on the street from cops. We can't do our job. We're not allowed to do our job. Either Daniel Outlaws stopping us from doing our job, or Mayor Ted Wheeler's stopping us from doing our job.
Okay, that's separate from this. Bring it back.
So I'm hoping that if you guys change this policy and get out of where you've been, hopefully, there will be a better reflection on the street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
I'll just second that motion of everything that was just said. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Very good. And there was a fourth person who's not here or is here?
Steve Sewell.
Very good. Coming up, sir.
Thank you. G'day, Commissioners. I'm Steve Sewell. I'm here on behalf of the Society of Professional Journalists, local chapter. Amanda Waldrup, our president, I believe submitted written testimony. I work as the editor for the Oregonians Watchdog and Data-Driven Enterprise Team, and my team works with public records databases to perform analyses of important problems of public policy and to hold agencies accountable and to, in many cases, identify solutions. In our work with the Police Bureau's current database, we've encountered many barriers to access. It's been difficult... Apparently, the system is very difficult for the Bureau to work with to export data in bulk, and as a consequence, we've been quoted extremely exorbitant fee estimates for producing data. One was in excess of $1 million. We did not pay. In an effort to get a better understanding of how the data is structured and make more informed and precise requests of the Bureau, we've attempted to access their data dictionary, which is a document that describes the contents of a database, the tables and fields that it contains. And we were told, in response to our request, that this was a trade secret stipulated by the vendor. This new contract is a real opportunity to make sure that that doesn't happen again. We have requested that two requirements be included in the RFP, that the data be capable of being exported in bulk or in part without any special coding, that any ordinary Bureau employee be able to perform that function, and second, that a data dictionary should be made deliverable under the contract and a public record that can be accessed by the public upon request. Thank you.
Could you answer one quick... Because I didn't quite follow you with regard to the data dictionary. Could you describe that again?
Sure.
What that is?
It's kind of a menu of what's available in the database. It describes the contents. It's a standard element of documentation that's created when a database is designed.
Okay.
So it's an index or catalog that would enable us to be able to see what records are in the database and what elements.
And for my own benefit, and I'm sorry to go on a little bit of a tangent here, is that readily available for other platforms?
It's... You mean from other agencies or another contact?
Right. I've never heard this term, so I'm a little over my skis here, but is this something that would typically be readily available with a different software platform or data management system?
Certainly, big enterprise systems like this, it's something that it won't be built without the creation of such a document. It's just a question of whether it gets shielded from public access.
Okay, very good. As a trade secret in this particular case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. That gives me two new points that I didn't have previously, so I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion on this item? This is an emergency ordinance. Carla, please call the roll. I'm sorry, was there more?
Sorry.
Yeah. Was there more public... That was it. Okay. No worries. Please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, we've already done 603. We'll skip to 604, please.
Authorize a contract for integrated tax system software and implementation for an initial term of five years and an initial not-to-exceed value of $21 million.
All right, so if you thought that was exciting, colleagues, the Integrated Tax System Project is a large-scale effort to replace the city's multiple aging tax administration platforms with a single, modern tax system. This report would authorize the Chief Procurement Officer to execute a contract resulting from the previously authorized request for proposals for ITS software and implementation. Included with the report documents are initial estimated funding and cost recovery plans for the ITS project in Exhibits A and B. Interim Procurement Manager Scott Schneider is here to present this item.
And Mayor, if I may just jump in. Thomas Lannan with Revenue Division. Can we read both items and since they're coupled together?
Yeah, sure. 605 as well. I didn't realize they were going to be read together.
Yes.
Carla, would you mind also reading 605, please?
Yes. 605, declared temporary moratorium on new program requests and significant changes to existing programs in the Revenue Division of the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services to ensure successful implementation of the integrated tax system.
Very good. Thank you. Director Lannan.
Scott, please.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Scott Schneider, Procurement Services. You have before you the procurement report recommending the award of a contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $21 million. This contract will have an initial term of five years. On November 6, 2018, the Chief Procurement Officer advertised RFP Number 1061, and on And on December 27, four proposals were received. All proposals were deemed responsive to the requirements of the solicitation and were reviewed by the evaluation committee. The city issued a notice of intent to award the contract to Fast Enterprises LLC on March 19, 2019. No protests to that notice of intent were received. Based on the expected spend over the next five years, the confidence level for this procurement is medium. Fast Enterprises LLC is not a COVID-certified, minority-owned, women-owned, service-disabled, veteran-owned, or emerging small business. There are no subcontractors on this contract. If council has any questions about the solicitation process, I can answer those. And Thomas Lanham is here from the Revenue Division to take any project-specific questions.
Colleagues, any questions?
I also have some remarks if you'd like to hear them.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And this is related to the resolution, is that correct? 605?
I'll address both, the contract and the resolution.
All right, thanks, Director Lanham.
So just to kind of back up a minute, this is something that we've been working toward for many, many years in the Revenue Division. We recognize that our databases are long in the tooth, are coming up on expiration in terms of their useful life. And so the systems that we're talking about replacing include the Business License Information System, which is 21 years old and a critical accounting platform for this year. It looks like 150 or more million dollars in business license tax revenue. Over $400 million all-in, including the arts tax, hotel-motel taxes, and other taxes. This new platform will enable us to have a single hosted solution. So we're replacing many platforms with a single platform with off-site backup, enhanced security, and disaster recovery. There will be tangible improvements for customer service, including a secure online portal and electronic filing expected for tax year 2021. So we'll finally be in the place where instead of a taxpayer using TurboTax to print out and mail in our return, they would actually be part of the electronic filing network that people, many people use for the state and the federal government. We're also expecting some improvements in collections and compliance. The all-in cost for the project, for the project itself, is $22.9 million. $9.68 million is included in the FY 1920 budget as an upfront cash contribution to make sure that we maximize the dollars that we spend. And the remainder of the one-time costs are debt financed with annual debt service of $1.1 million per year. As directed by a budget note in the FY 1920 budget, and this is very much on target with what you just discussed regarding Regis, revenue will seek full cost recovery from all the funds administered on the ITS platform. This is Exhibit A to the financial impact statement. If you want to take a look at the dollar amounts, the funds would include the arts tax, the clean energy surcharge, Multnomah County notably, and others. And the budget note directs the Revenue Division and CBO to finalize the financing model by September in time for the vol bump, so that we've got all these pieces in place. The project is expected to kick off in August, and cut over to the new platform is expected in August of 2020. So this is an all-in, big-bang approach. One year. The vendor is the top vendor in the space. We have high confidence that we can hit these timelines and stay within the budget. And then that would be followed by a 12-month stabilization period. So this is a 24-month project with a cut over at about the 13th month. Switching gears to the resolution, just briefly, this would freeze current revenue programs and prohibits any new ones during the implementation period, expected to last again one year until August of 2020. This is absolutely necessary to improve project success. Again, just moments ago, we heard about Regis and a lot of things being added at the last minute, which really does jeopardize project success. And we may come forward with additional code changes to our tax code. So for example, if the vendor is contemplating some kind of a customization as opposed to a configuration of their product merely because we've got some arcane or unneeded penalty or interest calculation or other sorts of treatments that are immaterial to how we go about collecting taxes but are somehow going to be difficult to implement in the new project and on the new product, we would come forward to City Council and try to smooth out any of those bumps so that we can make this product work well for us. We're not interested in trying to force the product to execute everything the way that we currently do. In fact, we're looking to the vendor to help us nail down some best practices and implement them. So I will stop there, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We also have other folks in the room from CBO, Jennifer Cooperman, project manager Rochelle Gorsegner, who's my hero back there next to Jennifer.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Udaley?
Well, I would just like to commend you for getting out ahead of this issue and not allowing your software to go into unsupported status. No Bureau that's performing a vital function for the city or for the public should allow that to happen. It's really a nightmare, I know through experience. That's really all I wanted to say.
Very good.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Fish?
So you described a 12-month period followed by another 12-month period or a 24-month period all-in. But the moratorium only covers the first 12-month period, is that correct?
That's correct, with a six-month extension. So with this resolution, you would be granting me the authority to extend it for six more months if needed.
I see. And is it a blanket moratorium or are there carve-outs?
There are carve-outs. There are three. The clean energy surcharge, which we're still implementing, recently passed by voters, the rental registration system, which we're still working with Housing Bureau to implement, and any desired changes to the arts tax within bounds. We would need to be careful about what exactly that was, but if there were desired changes, we want to keep that possibility open as well. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have public testimony on the resolution?
Maggie had signed up.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you. And I know your five-minute presentation follows years of work, so thank you for that.
I move the report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for the report. And Maggie is no longer here, so please call the roll on the report.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
So this is just item 604?
604, correct.
Okay. Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for all of your work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Report's adopted. Item 605, the resolution. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
I'm sorry, this just went by so fast that I didn't get some questions answered on the resolution, so I can either...
Without objection, would you mind, colleagues, if we let Commissioner Udaley ask her questions and Director Lanham?
Yeah. Because I didn't hear anything about the resolution. I didn't think to ask my questions.
No worries.
So I want to support this resolution. I have a couple concerns. One is, how long will the temporary moratorium be?
12 months.
12 months. And Mr. Lanham, we had had conversations about a variety of potential new taxes and whether or not any of them could be incorporated into this first year. We didn't have a follow-up conversation, so I don't actually know if you determined with the vendor whether that would be possible or whether that would impede the implementation of the new software. Could you speak to that?
It entirely depends on what we choose to do. So for example, the personal income tax, which was one thing that you and I discussed at length. We have got an estimate from the vendor about what that would cost. We have a timeline. So that's, it's not included in the scope of what we're buying here today with this report. We'd have to come back and amend the budget. But we do have the ability to begin work on that even as we're working on these other pieces. I'm not prepared to sit here today and say what tax year that would be turned on, but suffice to say that is one of the taxes that are carved out in this moratorium. Any other taxes would likely be a second rollout. And so we're going, cutting over in August of 2020. So think of any other taxes or fees more like a 2021 timeline.
Okay.
And I would probably, I would just like to add, it pains me greatly to have to tell this body or any other that, you know, we can't implement something, but this is absolutely critical to make sure that we have got success.
I understand, and I really respect and appreciate the work that you do for the city, and I trust your assessment and your judgment. I just was concerned that this would impact something that we've already had conversations about. So I feel new programs and significant changes. Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, though, it's actually effective through August, the end of August of 2020, so longer than 12 months. And then with you being given authority to extend for an additional six months. So we had testimony at the very beginning of this long session about a restaurant tax, for example.
Right, yes, I saw that.
We've also had discussion about needing a new funding source for Portland Parks and Recreation. So although it wouldn't... So does this resolution mean that we can't even scope out those kinds of things or just that we can't implement them?
We can scope them out. So if your office asks us to do some research, we absolutely can do that. And you're right, it's not 12 months. I was speaking from August to August, but really, this is effective immediately, so it's more like 14 months. So thank you for catching that. With the six-month extension possible as well.
And if we were to do either of the things I just mentioned or something that Commissioner Udaley's been scoping out, we'd probably need a fair amount of lead time to do that anyway.
That's correct.
It doesn't preclude us from discussing new revenue sources, just they wouldn't go into effect until those dates.
Right.
Got it.
Colleagues, thank you for allowing me to ask those questions. And I'm ready to vote.
Very good.
Carla? Udaley?
Yes, aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, this is a significant and an important project between the ordinance and the resolution that'll allow the city to collect revenue. And as was made clear, if we don't replace the system, all of our revenues are at risk. And so I thank you for the great work that you're doing. I vote aye. The resolution is adopted. Next item, please. 606.
Adopt and authorize the submission of the Action Plan Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020 for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. We have Kim McCarty and Matt Schabold from the Housing Bureau here. And, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have, we do not have Kim McCarty. We are blessed with the director, Shannon Callahan. Thank you for being here. Brevity counts.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. HUD requires the City of Portland to submit an annual action plan. This is the fourth year into a five-year consolidated plan. All allocations accord to our, the Housing Bureau's budget, as well as our partner's budget, the joint office, as was submitted and approved during the budget process that council has recently undertaken and approved. We are required to get your formal approval based on the adopted budget before we submit to the Housing and Urban Development. And Matthew and I are here to answer any specific questions you may have.
Madam Director, just to maybe simplify this, we have to submit an action plan, but is it, is it fair to say that the various programs listed on our agenda, from CDBG to Home to HOPWA, that what we're doing is seeking our share based on a formula?
Yes, and also letting HUD know how we intend to spend those funds in accordance with the already adopted plan and consolidated plan and budget.
Okay, so we're required to submit a plan in order to get essentially our share of a, of a formula-based funds that then support our work. Thank you.
Any further questions? Very good. Please call the roll on item 606. It's an emergency. I'm sorry, was there testimony?
We have Giann.
I'm really thrilled that you guys are focusing a lot today on housing. Mayor, please, please, let me state that save our vets and 38 houses for veterans is like a spit in their face. I'm sorry. I don't go for your guys' volunteer stuff. I do a lot with the places that I really, my heart is, okay? And vets is one of them. I would also like to say, I'm paying 60% for housing where I live. And the minute I brought in some new furniture, my neighbors got really jealous, to the point where they followed me down to where I was unloading it. And once it got in my house and I left, I came back and there were marks all over my stuff, deep cuts in the wood and stuff. So I'm glad that you guys are focusing on housing, but some of the, like, my brother said, the locks on my door were made in like 1960, and it takes about three seconds to break in. So why is us, who are low-income, having to have more vet from our neighbors and the community because our locks are insufficient? I mean, I just have a real lot of questions about, y'all are trying to do the best you can, I understand that. But on the same hand, when people try to bring up things that are really, really out of hand, I've seen them pushed to the wayside. So I'm going to hope that this is going to help it all. And I am proud of you guys for addressing the issue. Please, Mayor, more than 38, okay? Because there's a lot of vets out there. They're homeless, and they feel like they are being like fourth, what is that, fourth country? You know, when they really, I can't remember how they say it, underprivileged communities and countries. And the vets feel that. And I can say that because I see them every day, guys.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me finish.
Sure, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you to the Mayor and the Housing Bureau for your ongoing work to address these issues. Aye.
Wheeler?
Colleagues, I have some brief closing remarks. As the representative member of the Portland Consortium, the city of Portland has the overall responsibility to carry out, carry out all of the related tasks which are required by HUD. The Action Plan, this is actually our fourth annual plan for the five-year consolidated plan. It details the consortium's strategies for addressing the community's needs for affordable housing and economic development with federal funding. The Action Plan shows where the city has invested, our federal funds in accordance with community input, and it demonstrates how our investments affirmatively further fairer housing by making housing both accessible as well as affordable. And the city of Portland is also the lead agent for the Portland Consortium. That, it's noteworthy that this also includes both the city of Gresham as well as Multnomah County. And we are, as indicated, we're required to submit this annual action plan as a condition of receiving four federal formula grants, the Community Development Block Grants, the Home Investment Partnership Grants, the Emergency Solution Grant, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. The Action Plan contains a snapshot of communities' housing and community development needs. It identifies our local priorities and the strategies that we are pursuing to address those needs. And it makes clear which strategies and projects received federal funding and how those investments affirmatively further fairer housing. And so I want to respect and thank you both for the hard work that you put into this. It's a little bit pro forma, but it is also absolutely critical that we do this in order to continue to receive the federal grants. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much for your hard work. Next item, and this is our last non-second reading. This is item 607.
Authorize 14 subrecipient contracts for $4,448,250 for services in support of providing affordable housing.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Shannon Callahan, once again, and I am here joined by Emma Deppa of our Neighborhood Housing Program Team. The contracts you have before you today are roughly 4.5, nearly $4.5 million for housing services to low- and moderate-income community members. These services include emergency home repair, fair housing advocacy and education, housing, homeownership, counseling and education, relocation assistance, legal aid services, risk mitigation funds for permanent supportive housing providers, and resources for renter education and advocacy. There are a total of 14 contracts contained in this ordinance. All of these contracts are being brought to you following your approval of the council's adopted budget. And with that, Emma and I are here to answer any specific questions that you might have. And with that, Emma and I are here to answer any specific questions that you might have.
I have two questions.
Commissioner Fish?
There are 14 sub-receipients, and some organizations are receiving as little as $110,000, others two or three times that. How do we ensure Director Callahan that we're getting good value for these investments?
Well, Commissioner, we do require regular reporting from each and every one of our contractors and making sure that they're according, meeting the goals that we have set out in the contracts. So that is one way that we check on whether or not we're getting good value for the money that we're putting out. We also, each of these, each of these contracts is a little different for the types of services that are, that are being provided. Some are more easy to quantify, exactly the number of homeowners they have helped, et cetera. But we do receive regular reports from all of our providers. At this point, I think all of our contractors are on monthly, monthly reporting to the Housing Bureau.
I guess my second question is, how do you make the judgment between lots of small vets for different kinds of services and bigger bets in moving the needle on one or two or three? In other words, you're covering a lot of terrain here when you, when you read the activity descriptions, it runs the gamut, but you're making small bets on lots of things. So how do you, how do you decide, you know, what's the, what's the thinking behind whether you support 14 different contracts with trusted nonprofits, or you go deep with a handful and really move the needle?
You know, I thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I think that what you have before you represents a little of both philosophies. So you'll see that there are some contracts, as you've noted, that are larger than others, and it really depends on the nature of work that they're performing, the number of different RFPs they may have responded to and won. So a lot of these have gone through recent competitive rounds based on new funding, especially as it relates to work around landlord tenant education. I'll note, for instance, the Urban League was a contract, I think this council just approved a few months ago, related to, specifically to fair housing enforcement. And then some are actually collaborative partnerships, where the partner agencies work with each other and ourselves on the allocation of funding based on what their different organizations have the capacity to do within the community. And then many of these partners are actually working in partnership with other partners as well. So it is, we are combining both of the premises that you've brought to us, but it is something that we, as a bureau, are beginning to also have a dialogue about is preparing to, over the course of the next couple of years, because it is a, you know, it's always a change when you move funding from one organization to another, but we are starting to have discussions about, we are RFP-ing funds out to different partners so that we can make sure that we are serving the community in the best way possible and getting the most bang for the buck. Thank you.
I have a question. Emma, could you tell us about, there was a public engagement process. Could you tell us a little bit about that? How did that shape what, what the council's seeing today?
Yeah, so as you can see, a lot of the funding sources include CDBG dollars, and so you previously heard the Annual Action Plan. The Annual Action Plan includes a robust public involvement process as well as a consolidated plan. So a lot of the goals that are part of these programs are coming from those other public engagement programs, as well as, all of these have been approved by P-hac as well, I believe, which is a, as you know, community-run organization, so.
Very good. And Director Callahan, you mentioned risk mitigation funds to permanent supportive housing providers. What does that mean exactly? Could you explain what that's, that services?
Certainly, the bureau has maintained a risk mitigation pool for some time to offset any cost related to the delivery and provision of supportive housing. There are sometimes unintended, unexpected costs, especially repairs to buildings, things that may not have been foreseen. And based on the nature of the individuals and families that were housing with supportive housing, they are very, very low-income households, and there is a very, very small portion of their income, if any, contributed to the ongoing operations of the building. So if there is, for instance, an unexpected fire plumbing issue that goes outside of the normal wear and tear, we maintain a risk mitigation pool that we can step in and help cover those costs. This year, we have maintained the pool and generally the same amount, but I think as we, thank you for previewing this, actually, Mayor, because I think this is something that you'll see us come back to you in future budget years, asking, as you look at our budget, we will be talking more about this risk mitigation pool as we continue to do more work and increase the supply of supportive housing in our community.
Yeah, it seems like it's going to have to grow. All right, good, thank you. That's very helpful. Any further questions? Is there public testimony on this item? Carla?
Charles and Maggie had signed up.
I do not see either here. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for your work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Ordinance is adopted, 608's a second reading.
Replace park exclusion code to clarify ejection and exclusion processes from city parks to improve parks' management and safety at park facilities.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. We've already heard a presentation and taken public testimony. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fish?
I have a couple of people I want to thank. I want to thank Vicente Harrison, who is Parks Security and Emergency Manager, who is here today but not in uniform. And I want to thank Linda Law from the City Attorney's Office, who provided excellent legal advice. I want to thank my colleagues for a very robust discussion last week with very thoughtful questions. This is a narrow update, which allows us to have some additional tools to deal with folks in, in our facilities. I appreciate the confidence of the council in giving us this authority, and we will not abuse it. Aye.
Udaley?
Well, I would just like to thank Commissioner Fish and his office for addressing all of the concerns that I raised. I'm thoroughly satisfied with the answers. I believe this is going to make our facilities safer for everyone, and I just appreciate the work that went into this. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Mayor, I screwed up.
Commissioner Fish?
If I could for a second.
Sure.
I, I needed to offer an amendment to declare that an emergency exists.
Very good. Is there any, any objection? Seeing none, we have a motion from Commissioner Fish, a second from Commissioner Udaley. Call the roll on the emergency.
The reason being that it's in the public interest to get these rules into effect as quickly as possible.
That's correct.
Sounds good. Call the roll on the amendment, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. And why don't we redo the vote, please, on the ordinance now that it's amended, please?
Fish?
Thank you for your forbearance, Mayor.
No worries.
I can't even read my own notations. Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
People get to see the public's business being done in a very open and transparent manner. Thank you very much for that. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. To the consent agenda, 587, who pulled it?
Lightning.
Go ahead and read it.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for transit-oriented development planning for Northwest Portland and Inner East Portland streetcar corridors in the amount of $630,202.
Is there any further discussion on this? Is there anybody who wants to testify? Seeing none, call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted, 595 was also pulled.
595, authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gresham for $1,028,25 for the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Who pulled it?
Lightning.
Anybody want to testify? Call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. We are adjourned till 2:00 PM.[1775.63]